So it's Thursday, November 21st, six o'clock. I'm going to call the regular select board meeting to order. First item, set adjust agenda.
Yes.
We had a request from Hardwick Electric.
Add item number four to the slot worth to consider approving a current expense line of credit for Hardwick Electric Department, the amount of $300,000 issued by Union Bank.
So I'm going to ask, do we want that as item four? We have Scott here giving.
Like, we could do it as three and bump the budget to four, because the other two are really quick.
You think you can do it and bump it to one when Scott's here?
Okay.
So we can do, yeah, that's kind of what I was thinking, but we could do, we could put it as.
We can make it item number one, move everything down one, that's fine.
Yeah, is that right? One. Okay.
Just for the record, you don't have to ask her.
That's true. But she is taking your notes.
She's doing a fun job.
And she's arriving with zoomage. All right, I want everybody to agree. So, anything else? Could we have a motion to accept the agenda as amended?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries, there was everyone, anyway. Next communication from the audience, anybody here to raise anything that's not on the agenda?
Mike Salford? Just, once the legislative season starts, I would like to use the select board meeting minutes as an avenue for like legislative report. Every couple of weeks, give or take, depending on how busy where I'd like to submit something to the select boards, have it so that it's available to everybody to read. And also my email will be on there, so people can throw me questions and inquiries and stuff like that. But with your permission, I'd like to be able to start doing that once the legislative season gets off. And just would need to know whether I send it to town clerk or the chairman.
Is it something you want in our minutes, or do you want it publicly posted, like on our website?
Well, that's kind of up to you. I'd like to be inclusive in the minutes if possible, because it is encompassing work that we're moving forward with.
So we can just read it into the minutes?
Or insert it into the minutes?
What could be part of it?
Yeah.
I would, I guess I meant, I think the website might be a really good place to start. So I think the minutes would mean, if we did include it in the minutes or in the select board folder, that we would want, I guess, is it part of the ask also wanting us to talk about it in the select board meetings?
No, no, actually, it's just, I want an avenue so that the select board knows what's going on, the people in town know what's going on, so that it's readily available for everyone. I'm going to do that in all three towns.
We'll work with it to get it.
Yeah.
Where we do. So we can get as many people as possible.
Okay.
I mean, we have, so currently, we have, like, the town managers' report is attached as like an addendum to the minutes, right?
Yes.
So we could have something where our representatives submitted a report that's attached, that kind of thing.
Right, so all the attachments in the packet go on the website.
Right.
Great. And I'll just work with David and just figure out the best way to communicate.
Yeah, that'd be great, we get to be up, kept up to speed.
Yeah, and that way he'll have a direct contact with me as well, if something comes up and you have a question, I can figure something out for him.
Great.
All right.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Yeah. Next up, select board to approve minutes from, oh boy, there's several things. We have a public hearing, although it's November 7th. We have the minutes of our regular meeting on November 7th, and we have the minutes of a special meeting on November 18th. What's your pleasure?
Can we do them all at once?
It's all right with me.
I'm making a motion to approve the minutes for the public hearing, November 7th, the regular select board meeting and the special select board meeting, November 7th and November 18th.
Beautiful.
Second.
Any comments, questions, discussion on the minutes? Okay, they looked good. All in favor of approving them as written, please say aye.
Aye.
All right.
Aye. I'm going to abstain, I wasn't at those meetings.
Okay. So, motion carries, because we've got most, that's four of us, so, um, where am I? Town manager report, Mr. Upton.
All right, I did a written report this week, reviewing an Act 250 draft submission for the gravel pit, prepared by Monley Engineering. I received application being in week drafting response to the engineer, preparing the application with some small corrections. A request for proposal has been put out for advertisement on state bid registry, our website and local paper for the engineering school street soap stabilization project. I've gotten a few inquiries for more information from local engineers.
That's a FEMA project.
Correct. And the A and E, the A and E work is incorporated in the project.
Oh, okay.
Engineering act of work. The town no longer owns the Cary Road property, the real estate closing was on Monday, it went smoothly, so that's done. The town has received the municipal energy resiliency program grant, which is MRP, grant agreement with the award of $250,455.79 to perform energy improvements to four of our publicly owned buildings, which are the Public Safety Building, the Memorial Building, the townhouse and the library, the existing portion of the library. It's likely that we won't be able to do all the work that is in the scope of work due to the price, the money that we received in the grant. I'm working with the state to try to figure out if we sign a grant agreement, if we're going to have to do all of it, or if we can just go until the money's gone, right? But our first priority is the, there's a hot air oil furnace in the Public Safety Building and the senior center side that is, needs to go, because it's a hazard. So, and then I've spoken, Wayne Richardson, our town plumber, came down and we walked through and discussed some of the projects, so.
Are we going to point him town plumber?
That's an, he is our town plumber. He is, literally.
No, I know, he does all the work.
Yeah. The sewer department will be performing some control work and equipment repairs on the Route 14 South lift station in the next couple of weeks, new level sensors and a second pump.
Is that also a FEMA project?
That is not.
Okay.
No. We haven't had a second pump in that lift station for a while, so we're putting one in. And the pedestrian bridge rebid is prepared to go out tomorrow, I kind of want to discuss that. The cost of the rebidding will be tracked by SC group and will not exceed $6,500, but it will likely be under $3,000. And we are slightly over budget on the pre-construction costs, so we'll have to get creative on that, and then hopefully some of, some of this stuff can be reimbursed by the grant once we get started with construction. But I'd like to move forward with putting that out for advertisement.
I think that's what we, I think when we talked about it last time.
Yeah.
We agreed to push that out.
I'm going to have a good schedule here and an email. Basically, we'd be selecting a contractor by the end of January, so that puts us in a pretty good timeframe for starting work in the spring for the bridge and the wall.
Are we, is there any chance of attracting interest from other outfits? Okay.
Yeah, there are already other, there are already, it's some interest, probably interested contractors.
Great.
That's it.
All right. Questions for Mr. Upton? I asked mine along the way, sorry. Sorry for interruptions.
I did have one really quick question, okay. I noticed walking by, walking downtown today, that there's a lot of erosion happening on the backside of the premium of the house next to the school street property, under the garage. It looks like somebody's put like a beam in there. It's the like salmon colored house.
In East Hardwick on School Street?
Oh, I'm sorry, not on School Street, on, um, in downtown, next to the, next to the property that's kind of getting closer and closer to going into the river.
On Brush Street.
Brush Street?
Brush Street, yeah, thank you.
Yeah, we've been working with them. The plan is to, they stabilized the garage portion of that house, and they're, they've done the buyout paperwork for that. They had an engineer look at, a structural engineer look at the building, and they're waiting to see, or waiting till we get the brush, the other house down, so they can get in there and possibly do some things stabilization.
Okay.
So we had the state look at that, the state geologist and the EWP program to try to figure out a solution for that.
That happened this year?
Yeah.
In July?
So, everybody's kind of in communication about those buildings, but we haven't made any investments there.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah.
All right, next, the road foreman report, Tom Fadney, you're up.
We've still been out operating every now and then. We finished up ditch work on Bridgeman Hill from Myers Farm, do a section through there, then heading back toward Marie Reno's, I think, a section through there. Then we went up to West Hill and did a section up there from the block top up through to the farm there, just to try to get the water off that, and took out a little culvert up there, got that done. We got downtown pretty much all picked up, Christmas lights all strung up and ready to go downtown, just waiting for, whenever you guys want to flip the switch on for them or whatever. We had to replace the outlet, that was on pole there in the parking lot, that was all rotted out and burned out. Did that, we took the street light from across, then rolled and put it over there by, I was in the pot, and got that up. So hopefully that helped, helped out a lot, hopefully we got it pointing out in the right direction. Besides that, we got the pearly struck back yesterday, so we've got that all ready today, got the wings on the other trucks. We're still waiting on Todd's truck, all parts are in for it, so hopefully we'll have that by, by next week, so we can get that going. And of course, then, once we get that back, we've got to put a plow wing and everything else on that truck to get it going and go. Couple sewer issues I think we've had, besides that, about it.
I have a request for next year, maybe. We have a couple utilities in the road on North Main Street that are down two or three inches below the new pavement, I was wondering if it's possible to shim them off next year.
So you, yeah, because we did one.
You did one?
Yeah, the other ones you talked about, sewer manhole.
Sewer manhole.
Yeah, that's a, that's a special size, so it takes a little longer to get.
Okay.
So, but yeah.
Okay, good, thank you. I found one of them tonight on the way down.
Oh, did you?
That's why it's top of mind. Usually I miss it.
Yeah, but pavement came out good, I don't know if anybody's been over it or not.
I went up Center Road today, yeah, it's much better than it was.
Yeah, we got that all cleaned up and stuff, and Gravel did a good job at the time, pulling back the wing wall there on the box cover there to get that fixed and repaired and stuff.
Yeah, and it's all demolished and.
Yep, yeah, we went up there and sprayed it down, so.
Oh, you guys did that for work, yep.
And the overflow on the pond is now.
The doves are all fixed.
So that won't flow out into the road anymore and create a nice problem.
Yeah, cleaned out the guard road, underneath the guard road, we took a day, we got everything on the road and stuff, and yeah, so.
And the other two areas haven't made good those.
Yep, hopefully everybody's happy with them. Nobody on the pass came out good.
Okay.
Not good to dig that down, dig out all the other stone there that we ended up putting in, so they do a base coat and stuff.
Oh, okay.
But that came out good. Belfry, that came out fairly good, I mean, just for shim coat, I mean, it's, it's smoother than what, what it was up through there, I think everybody's happy, so.
Okay, great.
And we'll line that in the spring.
What's that?
We'll line that in the spring.
Okay. All right, any other questions for Tom? Next up, Mike Henry has the Hardwick Police Department.
So, we carry the automatic refrigerators in all of our cruisers, and you know, we've deployed it quite a few times, actually. Actually today, you know, good news, I just forgot, Scott Dagnos, first one on scene again, and deployed the automatic refrigerator and actually brought some way back for change. So, it was really good, you guys seem stable at this point, so.
Great.
It's pretty good. So the other thing is, next week, we have a graduation of one of our recruits, it'll be Robin French, so that'll be day four Thanksgiving, so be down there on that, get her out and start field training with her. The only other thing is, just kind of a public service announcement, with the AI going on right now, what's happening is these robocalls, that are not really robocalls, but scam calls that people are getting, they're able to take people's voices from, that you know, and it'll sound just like your grandson, granddaughter, or something like that, and they're using those voices saying, hey, grandpa, I'm, I'm in jail right now and I need bail money sent to me via, you know, wire. So, just be on the lookout for that and.
Don't share your personal information.
Don't share any of your personal information, don't give money to anybody over the phone.
Even if it sounds like somebody's.
Even if it sounds like a love letter.
Right, say I'll call you right back and call the number you know and see if it's really them.
Yeah.
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 Yeah, yikes. Thanks. Questions for Mike? All right, up next, thanks Mike, Hardwick Electric Department, we have Scott Johnstone representing tonight.
Yeah, good to be with you all again. I'm glad to share with you that on Tuesday night, the electric commission appointed your next general manager, Sarah Braze of Danville, so a reasonable local person. She'll start around January 6th, she's currently the assistant general manager of VESA, which is Vermont Public Power Supply Authority, so she's of the industry. Her real focus is around working with customers and understanding all of the stuff that's been flying at us from state policy, all the places we have to go in the future, and geez, I think during all the interview process, she kept saying, where I got to be in the early days is out talking to everybody to figure out how electric can contribute to the communities that we serve. So that'll be your focus coming in, I'm going to start January 6th, and I'll be sticking on and helping her and mentoring her after, and many thanks to your chair and town manager for participating in the finalists interviews, that was a great opportunity for us all to work together and I think it really served the whole process well, and so, it's out there and we're excited for the next chapter of that, so. We also, as I think you know, we've got a full crew up back on the electric department again, so yesterday was the last day we had a contract crew working, we kept them around for a little bit, really to focus on getting the work done, to support all the fiber installations and some of the FEMA work, so we don't pay for much of that, while our crew caught up on all the customer work that wasn't happening when we didn't have a crew. So just worth noting, obviously, we paid those contract crews a lot of money, but still, Grotten Electric, which is one of those contract crews, was here for about eight months, so we really owe them a debt, even though we paid them richly. We also had three local utilities help out during that period of time, Stowe Electric and Orleans and Morrisville, all helped the long call and other projects, so it's really been one of those best of the best of, the whole region came together and helped us through a rough patch, and now we have a really great crew, young crew, hungry crew, out there making improvements on the system every day, so that's an exciting page to turn for us, so I wonder if she knew about that. We've been working on a lot of deferred maintenance projects that I think many of you are aware of, for the first time in quite a while, the building across the street doesn't leak, and for the first time in four decades, the garage down on 14 South doesn't leak. So, that building has literally had water pouring on the lunch table for four decades, so that's all taken care of. State mandated us to put a handicap ramp in back end across the street, which they should have, which is required to have one, so it's not a complaint, that's happening, so, so we've got a lot of these sort of deferred maintenance things going on. And the other piece of deferred maintenance is, a couple of our trucks are in really bad shape, you'll probably see us looking to acquire a new line truck, one each the next couple of years. Those are pricey things to buy, I can just say that out loud, but we've got a couple trucks that every time you change the oil, have metal filings on them, and the trucks are so old that you could, if you rebuilt the engine, you wouldn't have much of a truck. So we're, you know, it's another piece of really longstanding deferred maintenance, and you're going to have to be at it, it's going to be a little painful, but you know, the good news is you can take a long note on those line trucks, because they last 20 years, so, so the pain will all come at once, but a lot of those sort of things, I've been wondering for a very long time. One way we'll get some of the money back is, we continue to invest in what's known as Vermont Transmission Company, otherwise known as Velco, it's a subsidiary of Velco, and when they need capital, they ask the utilities for it, and so we provide money at, you know, three or four percent, and FERC makes them pay us back at 11 or 12 percent. So, we can get, I don't know how much Hardwick Electric has, I know down in Morrisville, we get $100,000 every quarter that comes in back in from that investment, I suspect it's about the same here. So the more that we can do as a community, the debt of the long term returns are, and that helps pay and keep certain costs off of ratepayers back, which is what we got to be about, right? So, so we did that, helped ask for the biggest equity call ever, we asked for $150 million, so our share, that's a little over a million, so it's not small numbers, but the commission wanted to continue to make those investments. And I did want to just give you an update, I know you know that the Wulka Dam's been down for quite some time, you should expect an 18 to 24 month run before that facility back up. I expect it'll take a year to fight with FEMA, because we're talking about mitigation, not recovery, and that's going to be a painful process, and that, we'll get there, but it'll just be painful. But both of the Penn stops floated in this past January, under July, excuse me, and it'll take a while. My instinct is that's probably a two and a half, $3 million project when we get to doing it, so we have to go slow and make sure we extract every dime we can out of FEMA process, otherwise it's on our repair backs, right? It's on all of our backs, so we'll take a little extra time and make that happen, so. Or I'll just say, you know, they do think that the whole department is focused these days on, I think we've turned the corner, I think everybody's eyes are on making sure that the communities we serve are being well-served, and we add a little extra something along the way, which is what municipal government can do, so, I mean, with good morale and people are excited, and it'd be great to have a permanent leader come in and continue that work, which I notice our focus, and certainly the commission's.
Great. Questions for Scott?
Now, we've said this before, Scott, but really, really appreciated your leadership in this interim, and heard from so many people who've been appreciative of everything that you've done, so really am thankful that you've helped us get back on our feet, and excited to meet the new, the new person.
Thanks so much. And I think you two were both pretty excited about her when you got a chance to talk with her, so.
Yeah, in the interview, she's, she seemed really good and really, you know, really excited to come to work at Hardwick Electric, so.
She views this community as where she comes to do everything, she lives in Danville, Hardwick is her place, you know, that's what she told everybody.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, that's great.
Good.
Thanks, Scott, yeah. I'm still disappointed with the Wulka Dam, but I know there's nothing we can do.
If it can go faster, go faster.
No, I don't, no.
And I'm going to tell you what I think is true and then I'll deliver, you know?
No, I totally, no, it's just, it's just frustrating, because that produced 10 to 15 percent of our power.
Right, and unfortunately then we have to, it's worse than that, because we then have to buy replacement power, since the Wulka Dam power never goes to a meter, and anyone doesn't know about it, so when we buy it off the grid and it runs to a meter, we pay transmission, we pay, you know, the nationwide capacity energy market costs, and all these pumps, it was even worse than just you had to replace the power. She had to replace the power and pay all these additional fees, so it's like a triple win, which is horrible.
But the downside is it's only 24 months, on the long, long range picture.
Right, and once we had new Penn stock.
We still have the asset.
Once we had new Penn stock in there, it'll last 100 years.
And it's still available to us, it's not like we've lost it forever.
Exactly, so it'll be good, just kind of.
All right, well, you're on the bright side. Yeah, you're right.
No change in what happened.
No, true. Thanks, thanks a lot for bringing the report. All right, so, since you're here, item one is, Hardwick Electric is looking to borrow $300,000 from Union Bank to meet.
Cash flow.
Maybe you can speak to this.
Yeah, so basically, a few things going on between these extraordinary costs to pay Grotten, because they are, it's $25,000 a week when you have those crews, so that's a lot of cash flow. We've been doing a ton of work, of ready work for the fiber projects, you know, literally probably $10,000 a week on just cutting. And then, last time we had a rate case, the state said, munities are no longer allowed to have any cash flow available to pay bills with, because they wanted to penalize us, because they were mad at the munities feeling, the munities weren't being proactive enough, that we're being too frugal. So they said, we won't give you any money, and then you'll have to borrow money for cash flow, and that'll earn you. You know, none of which makes any sense, but it just means cash is really tight, and the good news again, again, is this will reconcile over time, FEMA money is starting to come in slowly, we're not going to be paying Grotten anymore, it's going to get cold and we won't be doing as much ready work for the fiber stuff, and there's, you know, so this will come back around, which is why we've got this one year note that we put together with Union Bank.
And the reason this doesn't have to go to a townwide vote, and is, can be approved by the select board and the board of commissioners, is because it's, the term is only one year, and because it's being paid out of income from the rates, like you.
Right, revenue not taxes.
Right. And there's an awful lot of stuff to sign, and.
And the commission did vote to do this, just so you know, I'm not reading it to you first, they approved it, I was here.
And they just hit it Tuesday, so it's kind of hot off, which is why we didn't get it, and it didn't hit our packets until afternoon.
Yeah.
So probably not everybody's seen it.
Well, Tony can't sign until Monday anyway, so like, if anybody wants some time to look at it and doesn't want to sign tonight, but can just address the motion if somebody wants more time to look at it and whatever.
Good. So, also, at the Hardwick Electric meeting, you or Beth said that the documents are essentially the same as the note last year, which was through the, which was from Vermont Bond Bank, I think, right?
Yeah, I think so, yes.
Yeah.
I was trying to look at it.
Do we need a motion to approve the? So I think, I think we need to adopt the resolution, I'm not sure exactly, but there's a resolution in there, and I think we, what the motion maybe should be is that we approve the note and we adopt the resolution that's included.
That's right.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Wow, quiet. All right, so, all in favor of approving the note, code, with Union Bank for Hardwick Electric and the resolutions included in the document, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, well, that's everyone, so motion carries.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Scott.
Appreciate it, and we will try to not bring things in last minute. We were on a track with a different bank, and when we got the paperwork, it was clear they don't do a lot of work, it was a better rate, but it was clear they don't do a lot of work with munities, and we're not going to negotiate terms, and we were not going to sign these terms, so we went back to Union, it was the second best rate, and that all happened at the last minute, so apologies for the last minute nature, not how we like to do business, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks. All right, next is item, now item two, select board to consider appointing Chili and Dust Ciarno, I probably shouldn't even try, to the Hardwick Development Review Board, and Chili's currently alternate on, alternate. And Jillian's currently alternate on, alternate on the board, right?
No, she's on the planning commission.
Planning commission.
I thought she was alternate to something, yeah? Yeah, all right.
That was Cole last week, and Cole was here, so.
All right, totally confused. So currently on planning commission.
She's on the planning commission, but.
But we'll fill in the DC, the DRB.
Yeah, before we, um.
We couldn't get ready for it.
I want to mention that it'll be a three-year term expiring six thirty twenty-seven, is what we're.
Okay, and, and, okay. Sounds good. And, oh, yeah, and we did have a letter interesting.
Yeah.
Um, all right, so.
Motion to appoint, I, yeah.
Yep, Jillian?
Jillian to the Development Review Board.
Could you just say like for the three-year term?
For the three-year term ending twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven.
Thank you. Sorry, I was saying stuff too.
Any discussion?
Um, Eric, is, is there's only one, is the only seat that's open right now?
No.
There's another one too after this.
What's the other term too? I'm just curious.
Well, they're all three-year terms, but the one that's, the one that will be open now expires six thirty twenty-five, so it'll be somebody just finishing out the rest of that until twenty-five.
Okay, great. Just for anybody listening, if somebody might be interested in learning more about the DRB, it'd be worth mentioning that there's another seat available.
Thanks, Mike. Uh, all right, so we have motion and a second to appoint Jillian, so all in favor, please say aye.
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 That's everyone, so motion carries, thank you. Uh, item three, select board to appoint, to appoint a deputy health officer for the town. This was a note we got from, uh, Department of Health, right? Um, so I think, uh, sorry, David Upson would be a great deputy health officer. He's got a lot of experience in this area.
So did something change because?
It's an annual, it's a.
Every three years.
Three, three years.
So it expires eleven twenty.
And actually, we don't appoint, we just recommend to the Department of Health on the day appointed, I think is what it said in the letter.
Yeah.
And we don't have a health officer.
Yeah.
So that's you.
Eric's the health officer.
That falls to you.
Yes.
Or there isn't someone else.
Correct.
He's a good help.
I need a, I need a good deputy.
Yeah, he's a deputy, he's got a good deputy.
I have it open right for you.
We're fair, we're gonna fix this in the way that it works. Um, so I'll make the motion to appoint David Upson as health officer.
Deputy health officer.
Deputy House, health officer.
I can second that.
Good. Any discussion on the deputy health officer?
Is that something you want to do?
He's good at it.
Sure. Have fun.
Yeah. All right, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Any votes?
Thank you for your support.
Motion carries.
It's a hook, you say.
Yeah. Um, I think I got them all. I have those, at least they're there, at least three places this time. Um, next is item four, business manager to present the FY26 draft budgets for. Tonight we're headlining line items, office and payroll, and revenue and budget summary, trails and library to present their draft budgets. It's gonna be an exciting evening. All right, Casey, turn it over to you to try to share with us.
Okay, um, so trails, I thought would go first, but they're not here. I don't know if anybody's coming, but it's trails. I'll put it up on the screen. It's basically flat, it's a decrease of twenty-eight dollars, so it's, yes. But let me try to pull it up real quick here and.
So I'm also on the trails committee and could answer questions about that budget if anybody has a question.
Okay, so here it is, twenty-eight dollars difference. Um, just kind of moving funds around a little bit, um, and I don't really have a lot to say. It's very straightforward, very few changes, so that's the proposed trails.
What are the different programs and activities offered? Programs and activities, uh.
Pumpkin walk is most of it.
The biggest one is the pumpkin walk. Um, the other ones are.
The bird walks, the nature walks, yes. I know because I pay those checks, sorry.
There was a geology walk.
The geology walk was amazing, amazing. Oh, it's happened again.
Yeah, but most of the money is the pumpkin walk because we buy all the pumpkins and then we have to buy these little candlelight, the little tea lights and the elementary school carts of all.
Yeah.
And Beth, who are they, our teacher, means that, it is kind of a.
It's well-attended by multiple communities.
Usually we get about a little over five hundred people, I think, that night.
Great.
Yeah. But, yeah, so that's the.
So is there any, um, I mean, I, I know we're gonna look at REC as well, but we do have the LVRT and we have, um, trailheads, and I'm just wondering if there's any thought about how we're going to, um, cover those trailheads and who, you know? We've had a LVRT committee that is disbanding and potentially going and blending into the REC committee, but are there any thoughts about trails having any part of that, sharing any part of that stuff? I mean, there's, right? Or is it all gonna go into REC?
I don't know.
Haven't thought about it?
No.
I've been asking about it for months.
Well, I mean, what makes the most logical sense?
Yeah.
Uh.
I don't know.
Would that be to maintain the trail? That'd be.
No, it's not about maintaining the trail, but we have trailheads that are in town, that.
Right.
Somehow, somebody needs to be at least checking them, you know? We've discussed how this, this is not something that the road crew's gonna do, so.
Yep, um.
Um, we wrote a grant for the recycling and trash containers and in that grant, we said that we were going to have the trash picked up. So how does that, how's that all gonna work? And doesn't it need to be considered in the budget?
Yes, it needs to be in the budget.
So is it going in the REC budget?
Um, yeah.
No.
I don't know, I mean, it could.
Okay, everyone's in the trails meeting?
Um, first Monday of the month at five thirty.
Are they coming tonight? Nobody's coming for trails. Is anybody coming for REC?
Recreation we're on doing tonight, it's the next meeting, because they did tell me what it was gonna be, but he couldn't be here tonight, so it's gonna be the next meeting.
Okay.
I thought Armus Paul was coming for.
Okay. Well, I just, I didn't want to not bring it up because.
Right, so we need to find a place for the trailheads.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And so what?
Because the state has.
But what expenses would that would be there for trash, and was I gonna pick up the kiosks?
Little bit of maintenance, potentially of the kiosks.
The toilet.
Picnic tables, whatever's there.
Sure.
Do we have a court?
Oh, right.
Court bodies.
Court bodies.
Say policing of them, just making sure they're presentable for the public.
Right.
Well, so I mean, then the question is, are they gonna be in trails or REC? And then if they're gonna be in trails, then we need to maybe cut budget from the REC to put more into trails for it or allocate that to the REC, right?
Yeah, I think Tim's totally spot on, like if there's basically, um, like if part of the goal of the budget is to get close to what was actually spent last year, the REC committee's consistently spent a little bit less than their budget. So maybe if we approve keeping their budget the same, but then have a conversation with REC or with trails about, I mean, it's hard to know, but like fifteen hundred dollars of their budget being focused on figuring this out and supporting it. I mean, I don't want to put that on them without actually having a conversation with Jason and the REC committee because that doesn't seem entirely fair, but, um, but maybe that's a way to give them all that they are asking for and know that there's gonna be some kind of support. I don't think it's responsible for us to not allocate anything for the LVRT because it's gonna be really busy and it needs some, something. So it makes sense for it to be in trails in my mind, but if it ends up being the REC committee, that's, as long as it's done and managed, it doesn't, it doesn't matter to me.
So this isn't a Hardwick Trails budget, it's a Hardwick Trails budget. There's a huge difference. This is a one, one, one entity budget, not a, not a town budget, like for all of our trails.
Right.
And that's the issue.
Right, so it may be that it's, that, that we're talking about.
We stop doing that.
But I don't know.
Do we want to re-visit it, being part of the road crew responsibilities?
I don't think so. I think we've been over that a few times.
Okay.
What's the road crew been?
Don't know.
Dave said that, that at least the trailhead by depot, we've talked about this in past meetings, that we could incorporate that into the trash pickup on Main Street. However, you know, I'd like to, you know, this is, I think we've had this, um, this kind of lends into the conversation of the park and rec kind of thing. Um, I look at this trails budget, kind of like, um, what Danny's saying, as, like, it's for, dedicated to one thing. Like, we have the library or the townhouse, it's, that's for one thing, the trails is, is an asset of ours. So this is the budget to run that asset up there. Um, if we want to incorporate the trailheads, I think that we have to, we have to have that conversation and talk about a park and rec type budget, um, whether we pull from the recreation or we put it in, in a highway, because the highway kind of catches all. But we don't have to necessarily make the highway employees do the work.
Well, same thing with like the portal net.
Yeah.
No matter whose budget you put it in.
It's a service.
Yeah, you're hiring somebody to do the work.
Yeah. So.
Well, the company services that every week, yeah.
Right.
But it's a service we're paying for. It's not, we're not pulling, needing manpower.
Right.
And I think the question here is manpower, and who's gonna maintain the trailheads that we haven't put in place yet? Yeah. I don't think it makes sense to do this, to Danny's point, this is, and yours, that's the, that's a separate. This is for an asset. And so we try to find a different place to allocate that manpower. Well, the manpower doesn't exist. Right, but that's where it's either the REC department's responsibility or we say it's the town's. Right, we currently don't have a REC department.
All right, well, everybody?
Perfect words, I'm Wayne Marsure, rest in peace. See how that works? It needs its own thing. Needs to be way bigger than this. It's not fair to.
Danny, do you mind repeating that? I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
Uh, I said it needs to be bigger than this. Parks and rec, or, I don't know, I mean, we have Macville.
So you're saying, you're saying we need a public works, or?
I've said we need a public works department that encompasses highway, water, sewer, parks and rec, cemeteries.
Yeah, because that's public works.
Because that's what a public works department does, yes. I mean, my, my, my thing is, and I want to try to be respectful of everyone as I can be, but things, times have changed and we need to change the way we're doing business. And if we don't try to do that, then, uh, you know, I'm getting very frustrated. By doing the same thing year after year after year after year and not making any changes is, it's wearing thin on me, so. This is a great example of that. We, we fund one thing like it's the only thing and we have multiple other things that are very similar.
So in an ideal world, what would you propose? Combining those?
Parks and rec.
Combiding parks and rec stuff together, coming up with a budget for the whole thing. And, you know, I know everybody wants to have their own ball and play their own ball field and have their own uniforms, but the bottom line is, I can't afford to pay for all that. You know what I'm saying, independently.
So part of what you're recommending, Danny, is taking, just looking at this, the budget we have right now, basically taking these out of a line, out of individual line ads, making whatever it's called, public parks and rec, and then having that be almost like a sub-department or its own department? And then within that department, they can, they can, like you can still have a Hardwick Trails line, you can still have a REC department line, but we're really just seeing what the public parks and rec, like that whole one line versus seven different projects that are all with similar missions. Is that what you're kind of saying?
I believe kinda, yeah.
And, and one of the things in talking about manpower is we have two, we have one position that's a labor position, which is the trail, the trail salaries, that's, that's grooming and maintenance of the trails.
Not grooming.
So just maintenance of the trails.
Summer maintenance only.
Summer maintenance only. And then we have.
A lot of volunteer hours to do the rest.
Yeah. Um, and then we have.
I mean, we don't have to have that in all of these anyway. They all have the volunteer component, but.
And then we have a REC coordinator position in the REC, and that's really not a labor, that's, the description of that is to provide programming. Um, there is some time spent doing things on the ground, but really, I think what everybody's kind of trying, we're trying to get at is, is we have assets that we need to take care of and we need to maintain and we need to keep working and keep safe for people to access. So that requires manpower or people power.
Well, yeah, but I mean, if, and I'm not, I've always got to be a negative guy, but, you know, maybe the summer, the summer salary for trails includes taking care of the trailheads on the LVRT and picking up the garbage. It's like, sorry, you can't, you know, you can't write your own job description anymore. We're gonna write your job description. It includes picking up the trash.
Yeah.
And, you know.
I'm okay with that.
Well, somebody has to make those calls and make those decisions and have those discussions with some folks that have put a lot of time and effort into, you know, like Hardwick Trails, your example. I'm not looking for Wayne to have to be the one to pick up the garbage, but as a taxpayer, I need to pay somebody to do it, right? So either we hire somebody else or we combine the jobs.
Or we contract it out.
Or somehow. It needs to be addressed, but it needs to be addressed as, you know, Hardwick Perberry Rail Trail, I mean, they're just, you know, there's, there's, we actually want to get that to go through Hardwick to get to the other town and then this, the park down, the little park down on Cottage Street. I mean, these are just things, I haven't, didn't even come prepared to talk about this, but I'm just thinking about it.
And I'm okay including that in the, in the trails budget and if you're expanding that and then, like you said, like, that's not part of the job description.
Right, and the REC committee, you know, I, I'm not sure a lot of the programs and stuff that they have done traditionally are still being very successful. I don't know, what you, how you want to force people to re, redo things, but.
So if we have a public works department that is the umbrella over all these things, is there any, like, is there any savings? Because we have, we have passive liability, workers comp, all that in each category. Is there any way that consolidating these things gives us a benefit?
It's additive. You add them up, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think he's gonna say that. Yeah, it's, I don't know, that's gonna change.
And in fact, we're talking about adding to it, so it's, so we take all the things we currently do.
Yes.
You sum those together and then you add on top of that, is what we're discussing.
Either that, or, or we kind of, all trash picked up.
Either that, you have the independent ones, oh, you have the independent, of growing independent, growing independently, which is, we know we can't do that. That was, that won't work, I won't think.
So. Can we get a quote, could we quote from, from Perry's as to what it would cost to do trash pickup in the summer months, as Danny's talking about, when we put the cans out for two trailheads and for downtown? This comes up every single year, and Danny is right, that we talk about this and talk about also utilizing, you know, people, I mean, Tom can speak to the downtown more, because it ends up being the road crew that, that takes, that does most of that, I think, it looks like. But could we see how much that would cost? Because it would be cheaper than.
There was a quote attached to the grant that we wrote to the Solid Waste District for those trailhead trash and recycling receptables. So there, there is a figure somewhere in the world, I don't know what it is, but.
But maybe we can add on just the trash in general in temp, to, just to see what it would cost for them to do it?
Again, if we're going to do that, why would we add a trail expense to a recreation budget when we have a trails budget?
Yeah, it's fine to put it in there.
You know what I'm saying? Just about where you put it.
Yeah, I mean, this is a little budget fix, was just for, or has historically been just for that trail system. And it's called Hardwick Trails, not because it's meant to encompass all the trails in Hardwick, but because it was previously called Hazen Trails. And sometime before I arrived on the scene, somebody decided that Hazen Trails implied that it was for Hazen and not for the whole town.
Right.
And so there's an effort to redeem it as Hardwick Trails to make it more seen, more open to all Hardwick. So it wasn't, so that's why the name is the way it is. It wasn't intended to encompass all the trails.
No.
So could we for our next meeting, just because this is the time where we're, I mean, we're just kind of initially having conversations about this. Before, we've seen the breakdown of the recreation budget. You know, Jason's often come in, or somebody's come in and talked to us about it, and we've seen what they're using, where their money is going where. Could we just invite them to the next meeting to talk about if it makes sense for the rec to have a bigger conversation about it while they're here, and then also see what those line items are?
So, and you could find costs for trash pickup?
We have those.
Okay.
Yeah. We can fool around with this a little bit, based on the conversation. I think I know what you guys are looking for. So maybe tweak things.
Okay.
Yeah, so is there anything in here that's Ottawa, or? You guys are, or any questions that pop up?
It seems like.
The only thing I was going to, going to mention from the equity committee standpoint is, um, we, I just emailed you Casey about this, and it's my fault for being away and not have, having emailed you sooner, but we did just get that from White Community Foundation grant for ten thousand dollars that we're using over the course of this year and next year. And that ten thousand dollars is going to be basically sub-granted to organizations in town that get appropriation. So town-funded organizations, um, to support them in equity, equity work. So we're, we just sent out those letters, um, this past week, and we're going to be hopefully getting, um, eight or 10 organizations to be joining us. But that going from twenty-five hundred dollars to five hundred dollars is really a big jump. And it was based on us not spending.
No, we're, we haven't got to line items yet, but.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought we were line items.
We haven't ones there.
I can't, I can tell them.
Are we done, trails?
That was the question.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, people ready to move on to the next one?
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, I was going to let the library go next, so can you just hold that? Do you mind?
Yep, totally.
Thanks. Okay, so you have it in your packet, um, I'll come down here to the bottom, and then Daphne, talk about increases, reason for increases.
Yeah, we, with the, with the new addition, which we're hoping will be operational in March, so we're getting closer.
Could you speak up maybe a little bit more?
We're going to open it in March. There are some mechanical issues and, and other increases tied to the expansion directly, which is a phone line for the elevator, which is expensive, which is required. We've increased the custodial budget, and we're anticipating an increased electric bill, since the new building is all-electric. We've, we're asking for a seventeen percent increase, which is twenty-seven thousand dollars. It sounds more dramatic than the actual number. And we're asking to increase the library assistant's pay to twenty dollars an hour, an extra dollar seventy-six over Cola plus two percent, since he's been there a lot of years, and combines both tech and library assistant. And twenty dollars an hour is pretty much the bare minimum these days, I think, for anybody working in that kind of a position. We also are asking to increase the hours for the youth librarian up three hours a week, and for the library assistant up five hours a week. And this is primarily to take advantage of the expansion. We want to fulfill the mission of the library by providing more programs, and that's really only possible with extra people available. So if the youth librarian is running a program with kids, then there'll be another body there to run the desk. If we don't have the extra hours, it's going to be really frustrating. There's also a safety issue, just in terms of monitoring the space, because it's a big increase in space. So we're basically asking for eight extra hours a week. And that's where we are.
With the eight extra hours of the library, do they open more?
No.
Add something. What it, what it will do, Eric, and to the rest of the board, is that the, as Daphne said, it's a safety issue. Building needs coverage. Having one person in that large space could be impact, could have a dangerous impact if there were a situation that was dangerous. And our world is different. If something were to happen, that one person would be online alone. Even though they're close to a town building just across the street, it would be potentially difficult.
Well, we have police officers that are alone without radio communication right now, doing their jobs, so I hate to be, hate to be carried away, but the fact of the matter is, that's the way it is.
I didn't hear, who, who you said?
I said, we have police officers out there by themselves without radio communication right now, working every day. So unfortunately, I'm going to need a much stronger case than, than that.
Well, we're talking about the children's, the children and youth area, where we need to have supervision. I sympathize with a policeman out there with no radio communication, that's not a good thing. But I also don't think it's good to have a bunch of kids.
So neither of you ladies were involved in the many, many discussions we've had over the years about the library, and the increased cost, it would be to the taxpayers of Hardwick for this expansion. And the assurances that we were given time and time and time and time again, that there wouldn't be these types of increases. So from what I'm seeing here, you're, you're asking for a fairly substantial increase in the budget, as well as we've got a forty-seven thousand, five hundred dollar bond payment. So I see increases that, that we discussed that weren't going to occur, occurring, and the building isn't even open yet. So I'm pretty concerned about that myself, but I'm just going on record to say it now, I guess.
Do you mind, excuse me, do you mind if I just, I'm just really quickly, I just wanted to mention that I, I met with Diana, toured the space last week, and talked to her a lot about this. And I just, um, I hear you, Danny, I just wanted to say that I think the way that she's handling adding to the staff is actually really conservative, and is really, um, it's about the new space, but it's also in terms of the, I forget Kevin's title exactly, but in terms of that request, that is really less about the expansion and more about having somebody who's worked almost ten years and has a lot of responsibility in the library. If she's not there, Kevin takes over. And, and that's, to me, what she described is like, that's just providing him with the, with fair wages. And yes, his desk will cha, will move from where it is currently to the new space, but it sounded like that, that addition, and correct me if I'm wrong, Daphne, but it sounded like that position was really more about, um, really fair compensation for that role. And then also, I wanted to mention that, you know, she and I talked about volunteerism. It sounds like there's going to be a push to get some support for the space. Also, how, it hasn't been opened yet, to your point, Danny, so there will be a better idea of what will, like, what the space will need next year. But this is a way to make sure, you know, the, the children's programs are already very popular, um, and are going to continue to be more popular. And that's, so to, to me, anyway, there was a lot of description on that, about how this could be providing, adding to that role, it's going to be providing more programs, having more presence in that space. So yes, it is an increase partly, it seems like, because of the space, partially not. The maintenance and the custodial is like pretty obviously that, but I do, I will advocate for increasing that rule. And I think that's something that we've done across every other town department, where we've tried to get our staff rates of pay to be, um, to be fair, to be, keep good people, because we don't, it's hard to recruit and keep people in our community. So I just wanted to mention that, um, yeah, and correct me, Daphne and Andrea, if I, if I misspoke in any way, please correct me, but that's kind of a recap of what I talked to Diane about.
No, the expectation is that we already have really successful programs for kids, and we're hoping with the teen room will also draw teens into the space. And I think the added funds for programs to utilize the space, which we now have, which is phenomenal, nurtures our children, and will, and it honors them in many ways, because the space for them is brand new, and it's fabulous. And I think we owe it to the kids of Hardwick to show them that we, we're going to give them this. Give them programs that they will value, and provide nurturing for young kids from Head Start who come there every week. There's also tremendous interest in the meeting room. Diane's gotten people every day asking about the meeting room. It's going to, I expect it to be hugely popular as well downstairs for all kinds of activities. So I think we're, we're asking for an increase of twenty-eight thousand. And I know that's a chunk of change, and I, and I respect your concerns for, for increases everywhere. But I think libraries are really important, and they provide services to all kinds of people. To people for internet use, for, for people who need support with getting their phone working, that Kevin is constantly doing, helping people with their tech. And a welcoming space that's accessible, finally. The accessibility issue is huge. It seems really crazy to spend millions of dollars on a building and then not be able to utilize it to its, to the greatest extent possible.
Who plans the, the programs that you offer, and is there any opportunity to collaborate with different organizations or schools, for example, so that they would then come in, or you talked about volunteerism and things, you know, are they able to bear some of that ground?
Well, Diane and, and Rachel, the youth librarian, design the programs. They collaborate with, with both the elementary and the high school on activities, writing, writing groups, and, and they collaborate with Head Start. But I don't think we can ask staff at the high school or at the elementary to run programs in the library. That seems a stretch. Volunteers certainly are great. They can't take on the desk with books returning and withdrawing. It just makes, it's a disaster for the, for the computer system. So we'll certainly try and draw in as many volunteers as possible, but that's limited. The librarians are trained librarians. They're, they're trained in library services. It's, it's not a role that anyone can step into easily.
I know that in this, a lot of conferences I've been to, and meetings that I have with other town officials, the libraries in towns become a hub for services for folks. And in a town like Hardwick, where we're miles from state agencies and services, folks within walking distance of the downtown use that space quite often. And another thing that I see, just in my observations and travels, I come out the door of the town manager's office all summer long, and there's kids across the street running along, using the library, in and out of the library. You go over there and go in the library, and there's kids there. This library, I think, has been divisive in town. There's a lot of opinions about the library. But I feel that the long game for this facility is our children, and, and how they utilize that. It's a safe space for them to be, and to have adults there to, to interact with the kids. I think it's, the value is, you know, is, you can't measure it. A lot of the kids over there know who I am, that I'm the town manager. We have conversations about the community, so there's, there's a lot of value there. My piece.
So I'm wondering, this is not exactly related to the budget that's proposed, but just in future, with the new space and, and same open hours, I'm wondering if there's any opportunity or any thought given to leveraging the Friends a little while, that, that Friends are kind of going again. When I first started on the board, the Friends provided a sizable amount of the operating budget of the library, and.
Say that again, Eric.
When I first started on this board, the Friends provided an amount of the operating budget. The town didn't provide the entire operating budget for the library.
So I can, I can use that. The Friends, we don't, there's no line item in the budget for programming at all, for kids or adults, and that's what the Friends provide. The money that they fundraise is what we use to cover the programming.
And you see the programming, the cost of programming is?
The cost of programming might be performers that come in, some, part of the summer reading program. If we have special speakers come in and they, you know, they might get a small stipend, supplies, craft supplies for kids programs, that sort of thing.
Jody has taken over the Friends. She's now the president of the Friends, and they're going to make a big fundraising push. We're sending out us an appeal in a month or so.
So that's an independent budget that you run?
Friends are a nonprofit.
They're, they're the nonprofit arm. They're, they're in to pay to do that kind of fundraising.
Yeah, I understand. And they determine the programming, the library?
No.
They don't determine it, they just help to fund it.
Okay, well, that was, I'm clarifying, thank you.
Yeah.
I think, excuse me, I think it would be helpful to see, and this is a question for later, and for some of the other items that we're talking about as well, but I think, and Liz has brought this up before, in that, in our budget process, which makes sense, like we. like we see what the town is responsible for. That makes sense, because that's what we're asking the taxpayers for, but we don't see everything else that goes on for all these different, uh, all these different departments and all these different committees and like trails. Your budget is bigger than just what the town provides, right? There's in-kind, there's donations, there's grants, the same thing with the library. And I think part of what makes it tricky to look at is it feels like, when you look at a budget like this, that it's all 100% on the town, and that this is the only thing that is coming in and out of the library, but that's not true. There's, as I said, there's grants, there's donations, so I'm wondering, just because this is our, this is our time to ask questions of the library and to ask them to bring other things back and to see like what might be shifting, but I don't, I, I think we, and there's not room, when we put it into the town report, to put the entire budget of the library, but I think for this, for this conversation, when we're talking about it and the select boards asking those questions, Danny, I think they're really important questions, it would be a lot more informational to see the entirety of the library budget and then where the town fits into that. And how much is the town paying? Is it 75% of their budget? Is it 100%? Is it 25%? I have no idea, but it, it might really help us inform kind of that, I, might inform that, and then I would also say, I think it sounds like if there's a way for the library to figure out how to make that percentage increase a little bit less, I know it's a tough ask, I know that you've already got through it, but working with Casey, working with OP to figure out how we can, how we can move those numbers around, um, I personally think, and this is just a general for the whole budget, I think when there's a percentage that that's just that high, it always, it's always really tough. Um, I know that you've worked hard to keep it really low, but I, um, so just, I guess to recap, I was saying, it'd be really helpful to see where other revenue's coming from other than the town, um, and then also, um, if we can figure out, if possible anyways, to make it a little bit less, I think that would be appreciated.
Yeah, we're, we're sort of flatlined on everything. The biggest cost to the library is salaries. When you look at the total outlay, um, the Friends have not been active until the past six months. We could certainly put together a number for what we think, um, the fundraising...
I'm not sure I would be in favor of the Friends contributing to a salary position, a salary position.
No, we, we can't rely on donations. I think the long-term goal, the long-term goal is to fundraise and create an endowment, because if, if Mrs. Judevine had actually created an endowment in 1897, we wouldn't even...
We don't know where it is.
We don't, we don't know where it is. Then we wouldn't even be discussing the budget. We'd have, and there, there has not been a responsible approach to creating an endowment for the library for the past hundred years. And that's something we need to do.
I think we would still be discussing the budget, because an endowment has different, would have different focus than, uh, fuel, oil, and electricity, and building services, and...
Not operating.
Uh, social security, I can't see all the rest of them, but it would be for, oh, solar panels on the south, and the south facing new roof, so that our electricity costs could come down. That's, I mean, we haven't talked, we haven't talked about this as a board, so I think we should probably wait until we have that discussion, but I, I will go back to my original statement, I'm really uncomfortable about the Friends supporting a salary position. And that's what we're talking about, this, about salaries, and increasing the, uh, eight hours of position and increasing Kevin's position, specifically given his tenure here, his salary, given his tenure here of 10 years, a $20 an hour fees, salary is pretty normal in our culture.
So, um, I think, just to maybe, maybe try to summarize, and, and we have more things to discuss, and I appreciate you all coming, but just, so you, so that you all know that the, kind of the environment that you're walking into here, and with, uh, requesting a 17% increase, we also have projected increases in our first pass from other departments that net out to, um, a total budget increase of 12%. Now typically, we try to keep our budget increases closer to 3% because we know who pays this budget, you know, it's all of us, we all have to pay it, and so we try not to have it increasing a lot faster than people's income. So just, so you know, that's the environment, like you're not the only ones asking for a big increase, that's why we're asking our questions.
No, I get it.
You get it, yeah.
I get it.
Not surprised.
And there, and I think as Danny's pointed out, there are, there are definitely other needs. We heard from Mike last time about a radio repeater that, that just isn't working.
And additional staff.
And, and the need for additional staff on the PV for this, you know, thing.
There's some, same reasons.
Right, we have communications issues and we have, and we have short staffing, that's, that's really not good. And anyway, that's...
It's the nature of the beast.
And we also are faced, I mean, so, yeah, the other part of the beast is, we have some really large, big heavy equipment, where like the trucks that the, and they have just skyrocketed in price in the last few years.
Just wait for another year.
Well, we...
In terms of, just, I mean...
So our budget looks out 20 or 30 years, our capital ledger, and so we try to anticipate, and we're trying, so like the truck that four years ago was costing us 160, 180,000 is now costing us 300.
Yeah, it's crazy.
And that's, so, anyway, that's all.
Okay.
So I, I guess, in summary, I think that had you walk away feeling not supported, I mean, I, I think generally people support the library and view it as an asset to the town, it's just the budget is more difficult this year than many years. So we'll see.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Fun.
And you don't have to leave, the meeting, the fun continues.
No, no, it's all yours.
All right. Next up, Casey.
I'll do line items.
Line items.
We pay you the big bucks to stay here, you don't get paid.
So I noticed in the line items that are, or somewhere, that the select board did not give the big bucks.
We can increase our pay around here.
We never have.
Nope, we never have.
We did have, we did have an effort by one select board member to decrease our pay on this way now.
Exactly.
I got, I got a near pull about that, for just recently, it was good.
Yeah.
I, I enjoyed it. It's a great story.
It's a good story, but...
I don't think any of us are here for the money.
No, clearly.
Yeah.
So line items covers, covers a lot.
A lot of things.
Yeah, and this thing covers our, our contributions to our, all our capital funds.
Correct, which we went over capital last week, and I did make some changes, which are reflected here.
I was going to ask, okay.
Yeah, um, so, right now it shows a $130,000 increase, and, actually, I'm just going to get my paper, because it's easier for me to be twisting, sorry. Um, so, um, so basically, your biggest increases are auditing, because our single audit, because we have so many loans and so much federal money that our single audit now costs like 15, $20,000, like, and then we have a $30,000 regular audit, so it's just a lot, so audit. And then we have, um, the library is here, because that flows over to this line item, and the capital equipment fund increased, because there was a discussion last time about wanting to purchase the trucks and not finance them, so there's that. Um, and then the road fund, and then the only other, like, I guess, increase is the rescue squad, um, 6.9%. So those are the main factors driving the $130,000 increase, with the primary being 85,000 of that being capital.
So, so if that capital doesn't go there, if that money doesn't go there, then it has to be a payment somewhere, right?
Down the road, we'll kick it down the road.
It'll be in the fiscal year '27 budget for about 40,000.
I know, same 61 after, but you just kick it back.
That makes no sense, so you, so...
I mean, it'll be less than 85, it'll be like 40,000 if you kept it level, but, um, but yeah, no, there'll be a debt, there'll be a debt payment added in the '27 budget if we don't, if we do the other scenario, which was financing chassis by the body.
Again, we'll get, but the next year, we've got, where does it go next year? Where does that payment go next year?
We have the same conversation next year.
Well, the payment just goes on here.
You will, it's here.
Well, she's saying, we don't have, if we, if we finance it, we don't have a payment this budget, so...
What you do in the next one?
Where does, where does the payment go when we have a payment? Why not?
Hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah, yes, because that's where all the debt payments are, so they're all listed here, so, um...
Great area, all of them. They're just funded, so it's the same amount.
I mean, you're going to end up, you're going to end up spending the same amount.
Except for, we're bound, I mean, so it's saving money, that's the only difference.
And we look a little nicer this year, because we, if we...
Is there going to be a discussion had by someone about, you know, are we going to look at refurbishing a bo- a body? Do we have, you know, is someone actually doing that?
Did Tom say he was going to?
We talked about it last time. We talked about it last time as a possibility, and I think Tom was here.
Mm-hmm.
But we didn't specific, I don't remember specifically saying, please look into that.
I mean, I remember that being, you know, I don't know why.
Yeah, but we didn't, but we, that, yeah, that would be a good thing to know.
Yeah.
To put a number to that.
Yeah. And the other thing is, is we also discussed about making equipment last longer.
Yeah.
Can we see the maintenance schedules on the equipment?
I don't think they exist, other than what's written on a piece of paper.
I think they should.
Yeah, I agree.
I tend to agree. Shouldn't you make the schedules? I think there should be maintenance logs.
Yeah.
I think anything log is what we've ever had worked on.
But it's not logged, you're paying employees, there's no log that says October 22nd, we put three quarts of oil in.
Right.
Which is burning oil.
Right.
I mean, if we're, if we're going to, uh, we either need to get a handle on expenses or raise taxes. Or if our equipment needs to start...
Yeah.
Well, we're going to do, we need to do both, you're absolutely right there. Um, but if we're going to be, you know, serious about stretching some of this stuff out, we need to start understanding what we're doing.
Agreed. It's realistically, in a, in a perfect world, if, you know, a, a single owner of a truck that does their maintenance every day, they get home, they spray off their body, they grease what they need to grease and change oils, those trucks should last longer than they do, but they're worked hard, they're used hard.
There's no reason the same thing can't be applied.
No, I know.
To be quite honest with you, these guys have a lot more time to do maintenance for their vehicles than an owner operator does.
Right.
Because I do mine on Sundays.
Yeah.
And they can do theirs from eight to four.
Right.
And get paid for it, so there's no excuse for the lack of maintenance that's going on over there. No excuse, it's terrible. Um, and if, you know, it's to the point where we, we're not going to be able to afford to keep doing the things we're doing the way we're doing, plain and simple, so...
Agreed.
If we don't start figuring it out, it's not going to be good. So yeah, because that's, it's...
I hear you.
So anyway, so my, my original question was, or my point, my original point was is, even though we're putting more in capital, we're not putting, we've got to spend that amount, basically, so...
Well, we could, we could hide from it this year.
Yeah, but I don't need money, that doesn't make any sense to me.
No, it doesn't, me either, but I'm just saying that that's what we would be doing.
That's what would be done this year, yeah.
Yeah, and we look good this year, but then next year...
Then we can, we can still do that this year, as long as we know what we're doing, right? You can honestly take the bait of the situation.
Sure, sure.
But I don't think that, I don't think that. I would rather find out that we could refurbish one of those bodies professionally for $25,000 and...
Because it's a $100,000 body?
Because it's a $100,000 body.
Yeah.
Get another eight years on it, and do that every time would be a business. You know, there's things like having a rock body, those bodies go on and off as simple as a bow does. You know, maybe don't fix one, don't fix the metal sander, just put a steel floer in that, and in the spring, put that on one of the trucks and use that and all the rig rocks and all the shit is going down. You know, there's things that have to be, we have to start thinking about taking care of our equipment versus the opposite.
And getting creative.
Utilizing it more appropriately.
More fit.
Absolutely.
And if the staff doesn't take that upon themselves, then, well, then someone needs to...
That's where either then would it be...
That's where a public works director...
Exactly, that's what I was just going to say, that they're in charge of that, or...
Anyway.
But, but, I mean, they're going to be required to then follow up on all those things.
Yeah, but we got to really crack down on it, because it needs to happen, because we're the ones that are responsible for this shit right here.
Right, but that's where then, you know, I don't think you're going to go down there and crack down on it, and you know...
Oh, I would.
I would, I know you would, I trust you to.
Doesn't go well.
But my point is, you know...
You shouldn't.
Right, but that's not, that's not...
Somebody's got it sooner or later.
That's not a tip.
But that's not a tip. I don't, hey, guys, don't make me in bar angry than I already am. I know what my job is.
I'm not here, I'm a...
I don't go down there micromanaging, do I go there?
So, so I want...
You're fine.
I want to come back to the trucks just for a second. So I totally get the part about the bodies and trying to work those longer.
And it may not work, it may cost 75,000 if you want to not make...
No, but we should look into the, for the bodies.
It's smart.
But my question is, okay, all right, I get it, I need to do that, but my, I'm moving on to the, to the truck chassis, cab chassis thing.
Yes.
So to me, and I don't know, so this is why I'm asking the question, to me, it feels like what we get from those things is even that, that they, it's not necessarily a matter of, like, they haven't been maintained, it's that they just cost more and more and more to, to repair, and so that's why we have them on an eight-year schedule, because as they get older, more stuff fails, not necessarily having anything to do with maintenance. So my question is, are we on the right location? Like, is we, because we're at eight years of...
Yeah, eight is what we're shooting for.
And are we at the right place, and how, how do you figure that out, honestly?
Well, that's been a good place traditionally, I mean, over the years that I've been around, that's where, the problem is, is the trucks, the problems we have with them most of the time are not maintenance.
They are not.
But maintenance allows you to run longer.
True.
So the problems we have a lot of times are like mine, and those type of things. But knowing that you're not going to have one for 12 years, about, you know, if you're going to try to get 12 years out of one, it's going to take substantially more maintenance than what we're getting in right now, because right now, we can get by with eight years without a maintenance. There's no fallout of it in eight years, but they do after 10.
This is the frustrating trend of all vehicles, as we're leaning towards...
Yeah, we're computers, we're not... I'm just trying to tie the maintenance back to, it's not as important. You're only going to, you don't need to change the oil in the rig, you're only going on it a year, because it won't blow up, but if you're going on it 15 years, you're going to want to change your oil twice every year, you know what I'm saying?
No, I totally, I totally know what you're saying, and I get that maintenance is...
What do they have issues with trucks?
But my question is...
Yeah, they're junk.
Okay.
That's, yeah, to your question, the first stuff is junk.
So...
But...
But we asked you to replace it, because it was...
So do we, right, and when something breaks, so now, it used, previously, it was cheaper to trade than it was to repair.
Yeah.
You know?
Now it's gone.
Now it's not, because you're not trading for 50,000. So the $50,000 motor job, you know, is more appealing to get another six years out of a truck now than it was before, because you could buy one for 150 grand, now you buy it for 1300. You see what I'm saying, so the...
Well, the cab chassis is under...
Right, or whatever, you know, that's what I, that's what I thought.
Yeah, so, so, well, then, so now you're making the other argument, that it could maybe keep them longer.
I think we need to keep them longer.
Oh.
We have to figure out a way to keep them longer.
There's no reason why we can't keep them longer.
Do we need, no, my, my argument is, we need to get, but there, well, keep them longer.
How much longer? What's our, what's the limitation? What do we want?
I don't know.
10 years?
We gotta, so, another thing is, is like, each truck, first of all, it should have numbers about driver's names.
Well, yeah, it's always.
I said that for years, each truck.
They all do have numbers.
Well.
It's just.
So you could say, truck 10 might be a really good one. You had it seven years, and you've nothing on it, oh, it's just still running good, you send your, you know, you send out your oil samples periodically, get your oil tested, you got all your oils and everything's good, and they eat nothing, she's really going good, keep it. Keep it running. You got truck 30, which is the newest big piece of car you actually knew your life, and you put money into it for five years in a row, it's about to come off warranty, well, we'll keep it number 10 for another five years and bring up trade a new truck, new oil job, because it'll blow up. That's what we need to do. That's the way it used, that's the way it used to be done, it wasn't just a matter of, oh, your number's up. And those are just things that you need to have in the management of operations.
So, do we manage?
So to take that.
Right.
And put it, and to apply that to our capital equipment schedule.
Well, you still need to know, I mean, we can figure out.
How often are we gonna be buying new trucks?
So it's still gonna be, what is it now, are you three years or whatever?
Oh, we do one of them.
Right, I mean, now it's like so often we buy one anyway. And you have that money there, you just don't, you don't necessarily pigeonhole it into truck six or truck.
Not specific.
We gotta do something.
Well, we can all change our budget, we, we do, actually, we have numbers that say we have to.
But we're just sorry, we're just doing shit against the law.
I have two capital equipment schedules, I have the original one that was done last time with less money, and then I did the same schedule again with the higher amount, which is why I have in the line items, the higher amount.
But just to look at the, look at the big trucks, so those are numbered, and what we do have is we have a replacing schedule that's.
Um, right down here, so, one, two, three, four.
Eight years.
Yeah, and then.
Well, that's because they're different sizes.
Right.
Used for different things.
One through four.
Are the dump trucks?
Yeah.
So the 10-wheelers.
Truck number two is the village one, so that's that CB one, smaller, but.
Either way, you're, you're gonna, we still have the money in there.
But my question is, can we make those intervals longer?
I think we're gonna have to.
There's also, you know, are we set, this is just a question, but are we set on the type and size trucks that we have? Like, can we, can we cover the same amount of road, plowing roads with three of those big trucks?
Yeah, I don't, I would not give up our 10-wheelers, but for sure.
Is it, is it also more cost effective? I have no idea if this is possible.
So, yeah, no, so the bigger, we pay as much for in-town trucks as we do almost, we do for a bigger amount.
Yeah.
So I don't know if you can see this, but in 20, 29, and 30, we have three years back to back where we have.
Eight trucks.
Big trucks, well, the village truck's a little bit smaller, but then we have truck three and truck one again, based on the eight-year schedule.
Would it be possible to outsource any of that work of plowing, so, in order to?
It's not reliable.
I don't think so, if not, yeah, reliable and cost effective, no one can do it as cheap as we can do it.
Some contractor will hang up the phone on you, because they don't wanna come out, hey, we paid you, do this, fine, I'm not coming out.
Yeah, no, you get into whole.
I mean, the part of the, part of the reality too is that we're, whether we like it or not, we're losing our winters the way that we had them before. I know that we can't bank on that, but to Opie's point, like, we, it's not anything, like, winters are not anything like what they were, and they're just gonna continue to get warmer and wetter, so I think it's almost, we need to think about, I mean, think about how we had six-mond seasons this past year.
But I don't.
I'd use a lot more, so I just, I don't, I don't think we should take away trucks, but.
That, that might lend to the 10-year cycle, because we're not using and abusing our plow trucks all winter long, so it might last a little longer, less salt, less.
Yeah.
We can't wait till we.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm trying to say, yeah.
Or you preserve, preserve one or two.
I mean, we've had wars about it before.
Will you preserve, maybe preserve one or two and use dedicated trucks for? So, let's not belabor this too much more, but I'll try to look at it, and.
Yeah.
I'm just wondering.
I think, like, we've talked about those, at curve, regardless.
Well, one thing.
The what, the 10-year schedule?
Well, looking at more maintenance, looking at, looking at retro.
Bodies.
Looking at longer terms, looking at everything.
Yeah, and then see if maybe we can, so.
So leave it at the capital.
Okay, so, so the goal is to not borrow for those trucks, but to continue to save for them through the capital equipment fund, and to try to find ways to save a little bit, maybe we can save some money if we still get added bodies, maybe we can save a little bit if we own them a little longer.
So the truck we just ordered is in this budget that we're doing now?
Yes, because it's getting so long.
So this, so in theory, we could, potentially, if we could find a, fix the bodies, redo the body.
That could happen for next year.
We could, we're looking.
What, what we were going to borrow for?
I mean, that, that excites, that excites me a lot more than.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, just throw one other super quick idea out there, and we don't have to talk about it, we can just think about it, but just kind of, I was just thinking about what you were saying, Danny. It seems like the way that we built these capital budgets in the past has been, basically, use it or lose it, right? You've got 50 grand for a new F-150, and of course, anybody's just gonna get it if they can, right? And then it's like, we do this for a lot of our other departments, and I know that we've been trying, we've been trying not to do that, but it's the way that we set up our budget, it's like, okay, this is the, we're basically telling the departments when they can get this equipment. So I'm just wondering if we can think, we don't have to figure it out tonight, but think about how, in addition to what you've already talked about, like, does it have to be truck-specific? Does it have to be truck seven, truck eight that are getting replaced in eight years? Or can we figure out an amount that we allocate every year, and then we do a review of all the trucks? And we figure out, like, I, I'm just trying to think about how, does this have to be, is this the best, most efficient?
So, but all of this, Kaylee, is we're guessing when it's gonna expire.
No, I understand, I totally understand, but if no.
But, but they're just placeholders, because we've, we've taken Bobcat money and bought lawnmowers before, so. What this is, is just a placeholder, is, this, this, this thing is just a placeholder, it's just numbers on paper. None of it is real, we can do anything we want, so, but we need to know when we're expecting to spend that money, that's the key. And, and, and so we set it up, like, every eight years. I don't think things like, we never used to have the pickups and stuff on, on the schedule. That's F-150, F-250, they shouldn't even be on there, those, those vehicles traditionally didn't exist. If they did, they were an old police cruiser, or an old, they, we went down to Ford Garage, bought an old S-10 pickup for 1,500 dollars, Kenny drove around, we didn't go out and just spend $60,000 on it, and that F-250. I, I don't think that, those two shouldn't even, in my opinion, shouldn't even be on there. You know, I'm not confident that the lawnmower needs to be on there either, um. Those are things that, that we could have some sort of miscellaneous category for, but we certainly don't need to trade that F-250 in one, two, three, four more years. Or we shouldn't, I mean.
Right.
Those were moved out last year, we spaced those out last year.
Yeah, but you know what I'm saying, they're. I mean, it's nice to have them, but they, we don't need.
We don't need a brand new one.
We don't need two of them, first of all, I don't really, you know.
What are, what are those?
Ones that are all entrapped ones.
No, Kenny's doesn't even in here, that's in the.
The F-250 has a V plow.
Okay.
And it's used for, it's got water parts in it.
Okay.
And it's used for traffic cones, plowing, small, you know, we'll use it to plow some of the.
Is that, was, was that was pressed into service when other trucks down last winter?
Right, that one's a 2019, yes, correct, when the ton truck was down, before we got the new ton truck, they were even not.
Which, I, I, I mean, we need a truck.
That can be used to, the F-250 can be used in place of the 550 or the truck one, in the event it goes down, which we've had to use the last two winters to plow roads with.
Right.
That one's a 2019, and so that was on an eight-year.
The F-1, the F-150 is, you know, if we're leaving the excavator, or the, or the, great, well, we drive the grader back, but it's like, you know, it's a, it's a, it's a parts vehicle, you, you know, you're driving it to get.
The mower, they use it to.
And then haul the mowers, haul the trailer, but it's, you know, for running around doing projects.
Okay.
Check it roads.
And just one small correction, Kaylee, this, these, this is actually not a use it or lose it situation. Like, that is the main difference between the capital budgets and the, the other, like, annual operating budgets. Like, when we put money in here, if we don't use it, it stays in here.
Yeah, no, I'm sorry, thank you.
And, and I think it's okay to have all the equipment on here, because it shows us where, where we need.
Yeah, and that's fine.
We tracked a bit, but maybe.
But we don't necessarily need to spend it.
No, like.
Like, we could run the truck until it dies.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
Until it dies, and maybe that's 15 years from now, and from when it was purchased.
Yes.
And maybe we could try to predict.
This is a moving target, too, we've changed.
Yeah, it always, it's very fluid.
Yeah. Yeah.
It just gives us an idea of what we anticipate to need to spend.
But it would be interesting to play with it a little bit and space out the big trucks from what it looks like.
Especially, like, those two, we got two big trucks coming up, do right there.
Three, really, yeah.
Put some time between them.
But, but, I think truck two is the one that we've had so many problems with.
That is, it's the CB that's, yeah.
But the other two are similar, I don't know which one, you know, one of them might be much better than.
Keep one for a little longer.
Yeah, we may not get rid of them, just because truck three is up before truck four, we, or truck one, or whatever the numbers are.
It's maybe truck one needs to get.
Right, we need to start making those type.
But I think that that has, from time to time.
Repair logs.
Could be helpful.
You can look at that stuff for a second. Wow, look at that, and this one we put all this money into, and this one here, flawless.
We do have an asset, this, or, what do you call it?
Module.
Asset module, and, and there are solutions out there for fleet management, they come at a cost, and then are they gonna get used?
I, the cost is, is extremely valuable, and they will get used if you tell your employees to use them.
And then the training fees and getting them.
Training fees, all this stuff, because you're not gonna win this one.
No, I'm not saying, I think it's a great idea, I'm not competing with you, I'm, I'm saying that there's an implementation.
You're not saying yes, Danny, either, so.
We can do it, I can pull the trigger on some.
Pretty much asking you to.
On some software.
Sherry's shaking her head.
But we.
I think pencil and paper would work for a good start.
Well, I think we have that in place, the pencil and paper.
All right.
Fairly certain that that is the draft.
Good.
Electronically.
My point is, is it's a, it's a, operating house.
Yeah, yeah, we have a lot of expensive equipment.
That's, agreed, not built like it used to be.
For better and for worse. All right, so, what else? Casey, do you want to call to our attention in line items?
Nothing, I told you what the biggest increases were, so, that's where it stands right now.
I have a question about tax mapping.
Okay.
Because we're doing the townwide reappraisal, does that have any, like, a.
It's because of the software that we got, that we didn't realize it wasn't, it like, was more like a one-time fee, so we thought it was, it didn't need to continue to be that high, so, yeah.
Okay, you thought it was a subscription, but it was part of it, it was one time.
Right, right, yeah, so.
Great, well, that helps us.
Yeah.
Awesome, all right, what do you want to show us next?
Um, I guess.
Wait, didn't Kaylee have something in line items? I could have committed.
Yeah, it's not gonna help us bring costs down necessarily, but we, and I just emailed you about this, Casey, it was my fault for not sending you the, the equity budget in time, but we have, we have a really big project that's being funded by the Rock Community Foundation, it's gonna run from, basically now, for the next 15 months, that's really exciting, and it's gonna really, not only help a lot of the town-funded committees, but also have them be responsible for doing some equity work, which is really important. The budget was brought down to 500 dollars, which is less than what we spent last year, which, so I'm proposing that we at least make it 1,000 dollars. Ideally, it would be 1,500, but we spent 991 dollars last year, so.
911.
What kind of equity projects are, are you doing?
So, I just, I was just talking about the Rock Community Foundation project, which is one of the projects we have. We had a plan to do a town, it was not really a training, but more of a meeting and equity conversation. We're planning on doing that again in January. We are partnering with the library, that doesn't cost any money. I mean, a lot of our, a lot of our outreach doesn't really cost a ton of money, which is, I think, why our budget has been less than 2,500 dollars, or our actual spending has been less than 2,500 dollars.
Uh-oh. She just disappeared.
Oh, I wonder if the meeting timed out, nope, it didn't.
She paused, she muted herself.
I don't.
No, it doesn't.
No. She's not muted.
Hope you're back.
No, she's back.
You heard Mike Eagle, that was, um, did you, did you hear any of that, Tim?
The first half.
Yeah, the first part.
Um, yeah, I was just, the gist of it was, the big reason why every year we come in less than our budget is because our programs don't take a lot of funds, it's all volunteer run, like, I think we do a lot of.
So, till she comes back, she's requesting.
Yeah.
Did it cut out, everything's fine on my end, so I don't know what's happening, but.
We got you.
You tell her, Casey, she's cutting out.
Yeah, you're just cutting out, but it's okay, we, you're back right now, so duly noted, okay, so.
Okay, thank you.
And then, I have a question about the rec department, if we were planning to make any changes to that coordinator position, then that number would go down by, potentially by 5,000 dollars, unless we just move it around.
You're just putting in trailheads or something instead, but yeah, that figure, of course, they haven't come yet, but I already know what, that, the figure that I have in line items is gonna be what they're asking for, so that's.
And does that include the 5,000 dollars for the coordinator?
Oh, yeah, and that's, yeah, that's includes what they're planning on asking for, yes.
And that's what.
Which, and they haven't been.
So, gravel pit taxes, we pay Greesborough?
Yes.
Do we get any break? We don't get any break?
We're in current use, so we get a little bit of a break.
I'd like to request a pilot.
Yeah.
When we have, we, when we can offer up some material.
Do we pay taxes on the beach?
No, that statue, that's written in statute.
Because of electric, because it's where this is.
No, 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 they had to change the statue.
It's ours, we don't pay ourselves.
No, it's written in statute, but we don't have to pay.
Just because it's the beach, just that.
Because it's used by the public and it's a beach, yeah.
Right, and now Jane Kitchell helped us with that, there, because we did, they did make us pay for a few years.
Yeah, that's the first thing she brings up to me every time she comes to my office.
Yes.
But I want to do a pilot.
But the gravel pit doesn't have a similar exemption if you want to.
Right.
Somewhere else. You want to do a pi, you want to try to do a pilot with them?
Yeah, I'd like to request a pilot, and in trade for material.
Oh, that's an interesting idea.
All right.
Because, but we, okay.
Yeah, do that.
I'm happy to pay them taxes, but we then just charge them extra for material. We can't sell it, we can't go.
Yeah, so I was just wondering, does that come too close to a sale?
No.
No, it would work legally?
Pilot to pilot.
Okay.
Payment.
In the.
Pay taxes.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, yeah, you're gonna bring that up for them? But that would only be the municipal portion, right?
Well, the gravel pit, the county taxes, the majority of that line, the gravel pits.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I'm not even finding the line, oh, wait, where?
Second to the last.
Oh, that's county and gravel, oh, yeah, county taxes are a lot. Okay, what else? Danny, can you do that something, too?
That was it.
That was it. You're good? All right, Casey, please move us along to something else. That was it, you're good, alright, Casey, please move us along to something else.
Office and payroll next, um, other payroll is pretty well flat, so we don't really need to address that. It's pretty, three hundred seventy-six dollars, it's the same. Um, the top part is obviously, this is our wish list. So it includes a project manager position, public works, whatever it may be that we've talked about. Um, salary and benefits for that person is about a hundred more, yeah, at least a hundred thousand dollars on its own. So there's obviously a significant increase here. Um, this twenty-three thousand dollar increase here reflects switching to managed IT services. We've gotten a code for it, so that's something we wanna do, I mean, we have all our firewalls, we have all of that security. But we're looking at doing managed IT services with just really two different companies, is that correct? Yeah, um, and our email alone is like sixty-five hundred dollars a year. And then we have Nemrick, we pay like another eight thousand dollars a year. And then we have COT, like it's just, it's a culmination, like that's all like the tech stuff. Um, but the biggest increase is because we're looking to do.
Solutions.
Yes, IT solutions, yeah, exactly, yeah, so that's, that's the other big increase there. Um, health insurance, um, even though we're switching, so we have like some status changes from like two to family. And we have, of course, the new project manager and then MPREDium's gone up. Our Blue Cross Blue Shield is gonna go up twenty-six percent, so we switch back to MVP, but we're still looking at fifteen percent. For twenty-twenty-five calendar year, um, so the bulk of this, and of course your retirement will go up. Um, with the higher salaries, um, so that's, that's really what it is, it's salaries and benefits. And as I explained, this is a, was like a placeholder, I know we haven't really defined what that position's gonna be, but.
We, we put everything in that.
And when would, if, if say we approve that, when will be advertised for that type of position?
After time.
After time, yeah.
Right.
Cause it'd be for July first, yeah.
So where does the, I know the answer to that question.
Or we can just.
So your, this office staff here, that, that's six people, that's, um, yeah, that's Tracy, Kristen. Me, Amanda, Opie, and the new person, so that's, that's all lumped together. And then town clerks and then social security and all that, so.
Casey, what was the, sorry, it cut out when you mentioned, are we putting, was, was a hundred thousand dollars comprehensive for that role? Or I was just wondering that.
It's more than a hundred, it's, um, because it's, I put like seventy-five salary and then all the benefits. So it's probably more like a hundred and ten.
Okay, so when you look at just the salary line, it's seventy-five for this new position. And then whatever the increases are for current staff.
Yep, for five people, yeah, correct.
Okay.
I, I look, doing, looking around, seventy-five seems low for that position. I know, I know, but I'm just saying, it's like, what, what's the quality of person ever gonna get at that?
Works, director of public works, like just because I know where they would need to fall, it would be slow, I get it, so.
But, and it's like, but then you get what you pay for.
Right, I know, but, um.
It's just, I'm just throwing it out there, I have no.
It's a decent salary, but I mean, it may not, it may mean that you don't get somebody with twenty years' experience.
Yeah, it's like, well, if they have experience.
Them, so I, yeah, it's.
But we, like, we need, you know, if, if we're gonna get.
Have to start somewhere.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Right, but if they're gonna do a mediocre job, I would rather have a, a person who's experienced and do well and pay them a little more than.
This is really, I mean, I could see.
Than have to fight with them.
I could see this position being a lot of things.
Sure, I mean, I'm, I'm open to the discussion, I'm just saying.
Picking up what you've had for. Yeah, no, I, I agree with you on the, on the compensation, um, but.
And if we're gonna attract high-quality applicants, you have to, you have, and.
Yeah, you'd wanna probably add twenty thousand to that.
At least.
Fifteen to twenty thousand to that, yeah.
I mean.
Right, yeah.
I mean, I think that the, I think that it's great to see it like this, and yeah, we may be a little bit off on the target. But we also, this is the budget, and the, we, we never go exactly to this budget when we go through the year. So, but this is really helpful to see, um, what it would look like to add a position roughly at that level. Yeah.
And if and when we do advertise, we would advertise a range based on experience anyway.
Yes, correct.
And you, and we'd end up negotiating a salary, you know, it would, there's a whole process, so I'm just.
Shoot, put ahead.
No, you guys are good.
And so, um, as I said, this is sort of like the wish list, and we gotta start somewhere. And I'm sure it's gonna go down, obviously, but, um, the IT services was on the wish list, so that's there. Um, but there's obviously some room for.
Talk to us about the IT services.
So that is really diff, so we've got the, um, the firewalls and the cybersecurity in place. This is to manage the network, roll out updates, um, keep a server that's not in a basement. That's an old computer, um, and then have all the backups, like.
And basically outsourcing that whole thing, so that.
Yeah.
If, in an ideal world, it just works, somebody else keeps it updated, someone else keeps it secure.
Yeah, yeah, and they would work, it's, they would work with, uh, the, the person doing the cybersecurity stuff right now. It's, it's, it's Colton's, uh, and Redmond Systems.
And does that just impact this building, or does it also impact?
That's every, that's all our buildings that we have, the, the library, the theater, the PD. The, the senior center side of the PD, their, their service is managed by DPS.
Oh, okay.
Department of Public Safety, or the. Technologies sector of the state, um, so, uh. Town garage, sewer plant, which is very important, because that is a target.
Yeah.
Um, for international and domestic terrorism, um, so.
Okay, so this would be all managing all that, okay.
Yeah, this is that final piece of the fortification.
Yeah, I mean, one thing that I really don't ever wanna read is that we're like.
That's on my.
Don't even say it then.
Would that be, would that be a, like, a one-time cost, or?
Oh, it's pretty real cost.
Annual cost.
And that's on top of other, or, you know, we have several software packages.
Right, so the twenty-three is all managed IT, some of it is just because our, like, our costs, yeah. Soft, I mean, it's the software, it's the monthly records thing that we pay to COT for like having our land records online. And it's, um, it's any service cost, I mean, our, that encompasses a lot of different things, so.
And. This stuff could increase by another fifty thousand dollars by the amount of phone calls we get from salesmen trying to sell software solutions.
Oh, yeah.
I just, I just asked them, does it include getting rid of people like you calling us?
You know, I, I say, do you know the size of our town?
Yeah, I mean, there's been lots of software companies that we've talked to about things that seem great. And then they're like, oh, yeah, there's a one-time implementation fee of twenty-five thousand dollars, I'm like, okay, thank you, bye. Like, it's just, they don't really, yeah.
They don't scale our, down our level.
No, uh-uh, no.
Ooh, um, I was just gonna ask change, sorry, to change the subject. Do we wanna still be talking about this?
This budget, or you have something on the subject?
Can we ask a different question, are we still talking about the text?
No, I think we're done, we're still on this, so, yeah.
Um, I'm just wondering about, for the, just thinking about, uh, something that Danny said earlier about. I think we all know that we need this position, but I think we're gonna really have to make the case for it, um, for our taxpayers. So I'm just hoping that before we finalize this budget, that we really get some of those details down. And, uh, a job description and really are able to talk about it at town meeting and how important, we all know how important it is. Um, but I think we, I'm still unclear like exactly what the person's going to be doing, because we've talked about so many different things. Um, so I think it'd be great to be able to polish that up before we present it to voters, um, so that way we can. Yeah, try and, try and make it happen. Nope, you lost me, did you lose me? Based on Tim's face, you lost me.
Very quiet, rep pondering, Casey's gonna bring us to another budget next.
Okay, well, at this point, this will be, so this will be revenue, um, and we will have been through everything. I mean, we, we haven't seen recreation yet, but we've seen the dollar amount, so at this point, this is where things stand. Well, we're gonna go back up revenue, um, so a couple highlights, um, pilot. You'll notice twenty-twenty-four shows two oh four, um, um, so basically there was a discrepancy. In the values that H U D submitted to the state, can you correct, like, explain that? And then, so basically they.
Yeah.
It was higher than they expected, but.
They calculated the value of their transmission equipment to PI. And we calculate our pilot payment based on their, um, their schedule of assets. So they paid us a pilot payment based on the numbers they provided to us, they realized they made a mistake.
But it was real, but it was like at the very end of the year, and it was, there was, so they just paid us that amount. So we, we don't expect to receive that again, so, um, basically the, it's, I took the twenty-twenty-five budget. And then the seventy-five hundred is any KDC, the yellow bar in pilot payment is where that comes from.
It'll, it'll be up more than that. Okay.
Yeah, um, so I mean, that could be higher essentially, um, current use is basically just, um, the twenty-twenty-four. I, I think I already have what we got this year, that's where that comes from. Um, state highway aid is just what we received in twenty-four, and I added like three percent to it, so it's a little bit higher. Um, what else, interest on investments, um, because we have pretty decent balances. And based on what we've seen, I did increase that and could possibly even go a little bit higher. But I think interest, deposit rates are gonna start coming down eventually, so I just, I did increase it. But I didn't go as high as twenty-twenty-four, cause they will come down. And the water and sewer transfers, those will increase because they're based on salaries and benefits. And the time that, um, people, that our staff spends on water and sewer staff, the percentage. So those increase as the salaries increase, and that's about it. Um, so we expect revenue to increase about seven point six percent. And then in all that we have currently in our drafts, a twelve percent increase in the budget. That's where things stand right now, in our first run-through of everything.
And so probably taxes are gonna be what, thirteen point five?
Um, no, well, because it's based on grand list, um.
Our tax rate will go down.
Yeah.
Yeah, because we're gonna have our reappraisal done by then, so.
Go down, but the amount you pay is gonna.
Level up.
Yeah.
Casey, I just messaged you a question.
Oh, on, on Zoom?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, cause I, yeah, I don't have that up right now, hold on one sec.
Oh, I'm sorry.
West Woodbury revenue, I thought we were getting actuals.
Where are we?
Into revenue.
West Woodbury. That's, that's what they pay us.
Well, right, what I thought, right, but I thought we were going, is that accurate, you're looking for costs?
It's, it's low.
Why?
Because we pay them, they pay us for a certain amount of volume.
Why is it low?
We don't do act, well, we don't do actuals.
Why don't we do actuals? I thought we were going to.
But we have an agreement.
Haven't had this.
Uh, that's the amount of our agreement, right?
Yeah, how long is the agreement?
Yeah.
Annual, annual agreement.
So, but like, like the water and sewer transfers, I mean, if our costs are going up every year.
I know we've had a discussion previously about losing money from Woodbury Road.
Last, so last winter was the first winter that we captured the actuals.
And?
And I still have them.
What's the number?
I don't have the number, I can calculate it.
Cause he tracked the time.
Am I missing something?
Nope.
Why, why are we not adjusting that to be?
We can, we can adjust it.
Yeah.
So to answer your question, Kaylee, are you there?
Yep.
Okay, um, so we historically haven't really budgeted for grants, um, on expenses or income. Because we don't always know what we're gonna get, um, we do for a couple small grants, just because they're consistent. Which is the, um, State Highway Safety Office grants for police. And, um, we have like Green Update Grant, um, but a lot of them we apply for and don't know if we're gonna get. So we haven't really budgeted those. The miscellaneous, the miscellaneous grants is FEMA money, basically. It's FEMA and the municipal planning grant that you're seeing in there, um, so that's why.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
So I guess my question is, when we know that we've gotten a grant, so say we get, just use the library as an example. Say the library gets awarded seven hundred thousand dollars from the state of Vermont, we know it's gonna be coming in. We get a letter saying, you're going to be getting your funds, whatever, August twenty-twenty-five. The taxpayers have no idea, other than watching these meetings, that revenue is coming into the town. They don't know it from this budget, so I'm not saying that it has to be a part of this revenue, I understand that. But I don't think this paints the full picture of what's coming in and out of the town. Because we have, I mean, part of the reason why we're hiring this project manager position, can you still hear me?
Yes.
Okay, is to manage these grants, but if taxpayers can't see the grants, how are they, I, I, I wanna figure out. And Wiz talked about this a lot, we, you, you right now, Casey, it'll be managed so many grants. Hundreds of thousands of dollars that are coming into the town, but it doesn't show up here. And I think we need to show, show it somewhere, if it's not right here, I just, I don't think it's a clear representation. Of all the work that we're doing to diversify our.
If there are ones that we know about, we are budgeting them, for example, in the library budget. You'll notice there's, um, internet, um, transition grant expenses. And then there's also grant income, which cancels that expense out, um, and it shows it's in, like, in grants. Um, and then for another example, the building fund, um, that, I think you're probably talking about the big grant that they got for that. But the building fund is separate from the library operating budget, it's its own fund. And we don't really even like report on that in the town report, it's a separate fund. And all of the building expenses go through that, so we would have to, like, do a report on the building fund itself. Cause it's separate from the operating budget, and we only deal with the operating budget.
Okay, Kaylee, this, I mean, that is an interesting point, and actually, I've thought about it before. But maybe we should have a page in the town report that, that shows the, um, the inflow and inflow of that library's.
So, yeah, I agree, so I'm looking at, on the budget summary. So it shows the actual for twenty-twenty-three for the higher garage, one point four million. Um, you know, a four hundred and sixty-six thousand three hundred and twenty. So why, that, why is that number so much bigger than what was budgeted?
That's your flood expenses, three hundred and seventy-five thousand.
So where is, where are the flood expenses? We, we don't see those.
Um, under highway, right here, July twenty-twenty-three flood, here's the actual.
The actual, okay.
They, they are there.
So they are there, no, that's fine.
And so next year, you'll see July twenty-twenty-four flood, um, but you know, they are in there.
I knew the number, I knew there had to be in there somewhere.
It is right there, and so there's no budget for it, obviously, um.
So that kinda shows, you know, for the.
Yeah.
Not knowing without asking.
Yeah, yeah, so if you take that out, it's like one million twenty, you know, that's what, yeah.
No, no, so we're a little bit under what our budget was probably.
Yeah.
In that year. So, okay, that's, but yeah, there's a lot of, a lot of grants coming in and out nowadays that it's very confusing to me. So it's gotta be somebody that pays, pays less attention to me, if there's a person.
I just think it's a huge asset that we have, that we should celebrate and we should, uh, tell the taxpayers about. Because that's gonna be, I think, the big selling point for project manager.
Yeah, um, the, the, the other thing about that is though, if I were to do like a little pie graph of sources of revenues. Um, even though we do get a lot of grants, if you did it like in a pie chart, for instance. It still would show that the majority of the revenue came from taxes or something. It's not gonna show that the majority of the revenue comes from grants, so it's still, I, I guess I don't.
That's okay, but right now, the revenue shows, right now, the revenue shows that we only.
Pie chart and it shows like eighty percent comes from taxes and ten percent comes from. If it's a pie chart and it shows like 80% comes from taxes and 10% comes from grants, which is great. But somebody might look at that and be like, oh, well, it's still the majority. I, I don't know. I, I guess, yeah. I guess it depends. And it depends on the year.
Still more than nothing.
Yeah.
And right now, they don't know about any of it.
I mean, it would be simple to do a pie chart of sources of revenue and split it up. You'd have your grant revenue, your property tax revenue. There's, there'd be a few different categories. You could put it in a pie chart and show the percentage of the total revenue that comes from grants.
I don't, I don't, can you hear me, Casey?
Yep.
I don't think you need a pie chart necessarily. I mean, I mean visuals are great, but I think, I think just somewhere saying in fiscal year X, we received this total amount for all of the town projects. And in the coming year, we expect it to be the same, if not more. I don't think it has to be necessarily a part of this budget, as I said, but I think right now, what anybody else, any layman person reading this would see, would see that the grant line is like $5,000. Which doesn't, which is really low. And we know, like, we know because we do this multiple times a month, that there is a lot more money coming in and out in terms of grants. So I'm just saying, it doesn't need to be in that line. I don't think it needs to be a pie chart. I just think somewhere in the town report, we need to say, this is what we're doing. This is how much money we've been able to source. And it's great. It's huge. It's like, it's an amazing thing.
So I don't think we can project what we're going to pull in for a grant that we know a year.
Can't project.
Because we don't know.
Well, you can look backwards.
Yeah, we can just say.
Well, there's going to be a lot of maybe's ifs and.
If you look forward, but you can look backwards and say, this is what came in.
And we're hoping to, you know, hoping to get something similar.
I think, I think we'd be better off just relying on. Yeah. So Casey, I believe you were talking about using it as a tool to show taxpayers the need for the position. I think we can do it better way than that.
I think we just need a strategy for communicating the need for that position to the taxpayer, whether that includes a pie chart, whether that includes where all this comes from. It's like, whether that's a breakdown of all of the projects that we have, that we show and talk about and say like, this is why this person would be invaluable to us.
Or we could just say, we've written this amount of money in grants for these projects and none of the projects are done because
We don't have it yet.
We don't have the capacity.
Right. And then, and then here's a list of all the projects that we need to, someone to quarterback.
And then amongst ourselves, we need to figure out exactly what this position is. And I think that it's not, there are different visions, but I think they're not incompatible with each other. So.
I think they all fall under.
So, so like Danny keeps talking about a public works director. Well, a public works director could also project manage a pedestrian bridge project.
Well, yeah, absolutely. Well, that's, that's, it's an administrative position that would.
And they can also throw a couple of bags of trash in the back of their pickup. It would do you a job.
But more importantly is that you take some of the management of the public works off the town manager's job, that plate. So he could do his town managing job.
Like collect revenue from West Woodbury now?
Or he could do that too. But I mean.
But that's an example. I dropped the ball on that one.
The difference between the project manager and, and the public works director that I'm trying to drive home is the, the management level that needs to be added because more eyes need to be involved in the management of the public works trails, water, sewer.
They develop the schedule of work.
He doesn't need, so OP wants something different than what I want for OP. I want, I want, I want a position that has authority under OP to manage public works.
I'm okay with that.
I don't want just a project manager.
I mean, I think we need to actually have a dedicated time where we all sit down and we talk and hash out, what is this that we have?
But those are the basic differences. I think that, that, that middle level management, I would call it, is what we're missing. That we don't have that currently, that the middle level manager between
Sure.
these departments and the town manager.
I, I mean, I, I hear you and I think ultimately, we're not going to, we're not going to answer that tonight.
No.
It's getting together and, you know, happy to buy you a beer, Danny, and talk more about it.
We should do it, we should do it.
As a group. Well, I'm saying, as, you guys, but I'm saying, and then we bring it to the group and talk about it and.
Well, we, we need to sit outside because we get provisions.
Right, but that's my.
The one thing that we all agree on is we don't have the money for it. And the public works director is definitely going to be more than what we've got in the budget, but.
Right, so.
My, my hope would be to get some, a younger individual with, you know, right out of college with some, to be able to do the project management's portion of it immediately, like tomorrow. And then under the town manager's guidance, become the middle level manager they need to be. Ultimately, the town manager's still going to be driving the bus.
Sure. I would just like to hammer out a job description.
Then ultimately.
So we had their homework. We did a while ago.
We all must agree on what.
I did my homework. I'll bring mine in. In two weeks, I'll bring mine in.
So if we could just rewind a little bit to what Kaylee was talking about. I, my suggestion was that that amount that we brought in in grants in the previous year be part of the select board report that Eric delivers.
It could be part of the town manager report.
Either way.
It could, it could just be a number in there, like this is the.
And then can be referred to at the meeting.
Every single grant, what it was for.
That's true. We could just have a, a number page after it's not the budget.
Yeah.
I think that would help people a lot to understand.
Forty-one now.
Thirty?
No, we're at 38.
Oh, yeah, going down.
Yeah.
Last time it was forty-four.
Closed out some, finished out some. So yeah, I mean, over the last year and a half, there were times where it was as high as 60, but it was, you know, 43-ish and we're down to about 38 right now.
Still, that's just a lot.
Ranging from $600 to 3 million.
Six hundred is.
Is it really?
Yeah.
Uh, oh yeah, where are we? Sorry. So that was the budget. So, so next time.
Yeah, I was going to say, next time, I was thinking, I mean, I have the Excel document here. Like, I'd really like to see it be like a working meeting, like, okay, what if we change this? What if we change this? Like, can we actually have it be a working meeting? Like, everybody come with, like, you know, I'd like to see this be this. And, and can we actually work and try to hone in that number? I guess that was my thought. I think recreation will come, we'll talk about that. But other than that, we've been through every department at this point. We know where it stands. Now it's what we work in and what's going to go, what's going to stay.
I'm not able to be here at the next meeting.
So I think before we do that exercise, we need to answer some questions. It's, that off my head, one would be the job description. Please do that now. We can't sharpen our pencil and the budget until we know what we're going to hire.
Well, so it's, it's, right, it's a position title and job description, yeah.
But I think, I think, I think what Casey has put in that budget is in the ballpark. Anything?
The low end is Woodbury, though.
You guys open this up.
I mean, from what I, what I, what I was reading, it's, you know.
We have good benefits, though.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think.
That's going to come with it.
I think it's a good starting point.
Sure.
Yeah, it's fine. So.
You have to start somewhere.
Right. I said, that's okay. That's fine. I mean, I, I, we don't have that money, so I don't want to give too much more. So we started doing that, I guess.
Yeah.
I think.
I just, I, we've gone through everything and there's a lot of questions raised, so.
Yeah.
I mean, for example, what are we going to do with the library?
Yeah.
Just example, if I throw 20 grand more into there for that position, it goes from 12.11 to 12.61. It's half a percent more for that extra.
Twenty times dollars, 20 grand more. So just a taxpayer. But a lot of people will go a lot less than that.
Would you apply for that position?
Hell no.
I'm letting you know what it would do.
So that was, that was a base salary up to 90?
Cause I only put 75 in there. So if you wanted to look at 95, for instance, that's what I was saying, that's a good budget, half a percent.
I would think that'd be funny. I mean, this isn't, this isn't town manager level. So I've worked, I've worked with young project managers, construction managers all the time and just come out of, got their, you know, got their degree. Got their civil engineering degree. They, they were more than capable of doing what we need done.
Yo.
And, and, because they're not going to be, they don't necessarily need to be managing the, the departments that are under them, like knowing everything, just doing things like making sure that the maintenance is taken care of, making sure that the gas would be, you know what I'm saying? It's, it's a project manager with the authority to, to department has that this is what we need to do.
I mean, there's a lot of things that this person can do for us that would streamline things. If, if we put, you have, you hire somebody.
So for once, for 75, for one of these guys, one of these people, and I, I've worked with, with them every day. They're young people that are just starting out in their career.
And they could be doing, they can be overseeing the maintenance, they could be overseeing mapping stuff. They could be overseeing one of the capital planning stuff.
All the grants, the.
They're like, this is like the person in between.
Yep. It's like the, the person in between.
Yeah. The fill in that space.
Traditionally, that management position is, was the working foreman position. Not, they're not about one or, well, as the job has changed.
Yeah. Call an construction company, looking for bids.
Looking for bids, planning things out, scheduling.
RFPs, right here. There's a lot.
Right.
It would accelerate our ability to get projects done by 10 times.
I agree. But, but I, my big thing is they, they need to be at a level where when they say, this needs to be done today, Kenny, or this, and not pick on our staff now, Nate. This needs to be done today, sewer operator, or this needs to be done today, public works, or a road foreman, you know, or like whatever. They got to be able to convey a message from him.
Yeah, prioritize.
You know, they got to have some authority. They can't just be somebody that's a young high school, you know, college kid.
You need to be able to prioritize. Well, while our road foreman is directing his crew, we could be, me and the, and the public works director could be formulating the work plan for next week.
That's right.
And then that gets conveyed to the foreman.
To the foreman.
So the foreman can start direct.
Not necessarily that day. That was a poor choice that day.
Right.
But more about what are we going to do this month.
More blame, sure.
Right. You and him, you and them, sit down.
Yeah.
And say, this is what we're going to do in June this year.
But right now, what we have is we have a road foreman who is in a truck and we're also.
He's a working foreman.
And we're also expecting him to bring us, bring us the bids for trucks and.
Yep.
You know.
And be involved in these grants and do all the follow-up and all the measuring, all the pitch taking and.
Yeah.
All the administrative, a lot more administrative work that was never done previously.
Right. And you're also talking a change to organizational chart, though, in that case. Because it becomes, you know, this.
Which is, I believe, also.
But then you're, you're, it's like you're saying that the road foreman would then report to public works.
Yep.
Public works would report to town manager. There's adding additional.
But so would Kenny, and so would.
I think supervision, that's another, that's another thing we should discuss, how the supervision works. The, probably, those town manager can still supervise the road foreman.
Everybody.
Yeah, and, and the project manager. There's no, that wouldn't change. It's, it's, it's more communication and planning.
Right, right.
And bolding, emboldening other duties as assigned.
Yeah.
Yeah, but ideally, eventually, the public works director would, would have people that were working with him that would understand that he's the planner, he's the administrative person.
Right.
All I need you to do is tell me what you want me to do and I'm going to take my crew and go do it.
Yeah.
That's the way it works in the big world.
Yeah.
Okay.
So that, we're, we're pretty close. We're way closer than we were.
Yeah.
But we're still going to have some, just hard questions on other things.
Everything. And we're, we got.
I just, I'm worried about the library and.
We've got, so we've got an increase in the library.
That's the only one that, that's the only.
For this position or for.
Well, to me, those two, yeah, but those two, I'm not weighing out three of those on the same scale.
I know you're not, but I'm saying, but I, I do because I think that they all contribute.
You do?
I do. I think they all end up on the bottom line.
So how do we?
It's a priority thing. And I think we as a board, or the board and the, the town as a whole, we need to look at all the priorities as a whole. And Eric's right, it is on the bottom line. And.
It is the bottom line. So I understand you guys, but right now,
Yeah.
we have three, three departments that have significant increases. And we can't, I don't believe we can fund out three of them. I, I don't know if we can, I, maybe. And I just, I don't know. I, I, how are we going to, I mean, we kind of asked the library, can they trim it up a little bit? And they kind of told us no.
No, they had some.
No.
I, I, I got a different.
Were you here?
I got a different version walking down the stairs, but there, there were some ideas that they were going to toss around.
All right, that's fine.
We got to give them a chance.
So that's my point.
Yeah.
Casey's asking us to be prepared to start working on this at working meeting.
Yep.
So I'm trying to say, in order for that to occur, I'm going to need to hear something from the library. Because I don't think that the police department, the highway department, or the town manager's office and the library are all on the same playing field when it comes to my tax dollars. I, I apologize for that, but you know, that, everything I heard tonight from the library are things that we, and at least you and you cannot deny that when all these library addition discussions came up, we talked about the fact that it was going to cost more for electricity, it's going to cost more for fuel. It was going to cost more for more help. And we were told, no, 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 every time. And when I look at this budget, I see library increases everywhere in there. In their budget, in their, in the bond payment, in the, in building expenses. Those are all increases. Substantial increases, you guys.
I agree. And, and I agree too. And I, and I think we knew, you're right, that some, there were.
We were told, absolutely, that was not going to happen.
But we knew it was going to happen.
But it was about here.
We knew it.
You know, these were my frustration. Well, I know that, but why are we?
Why were we told?
Our job is not to just say, okay. My job isn't going to be to say, okay, I'm staying out right now.
Yeah.
Because, and I'm not against it, but it's.
It all adds up.
It all at the bottom line. You just, you just let it go.
It all, it all contributes to the bottom line and we have to, we have to decide what we think is the best for the town and then present it to the voters.
And then they can vote. No, no, and then we can go back or not, right?
Or, yeah, or they can vote, yes, or they can amend it from the floor.
Sure, there you go.
Yeah.
But they can't amend it from the floor and tell us what to do.
They can amend the total, the total budget from the board.
I don't think, it's not really.
It's been a long time since that's happened.
That to happen, yeah.
But, no, what we want to do is we want to present, we want to present a budget that we think is best for the town and we think the voters will get behind it in person.
Right. And the, the main, the, the main thing is, I think, in the past, from what I've seen, before my time as a town manager and this time, is this town and this community is very supportive of what we have here. And they've trusted you with this. And there hasn't been too many, you know, naysayers out there.
No, but this would be the second real, we've really tried to keep our increases to be very small. And last year, things just, all the rising prices just caught up with us. And then this year, prices have still risen and we're looking at having staff.
Right. Well, we're not, but prices, you know, didn't rise like they kind of passed. Fuel's down, insurance's down.
No, insurance cares up.
Insurance is down.
Are you on that floor?
Yeah.
I don't know, that's not, we ain't got.
So in old business, Kim, are we moving to the next?
Sure, yeah. Select board reports.
I mean, I sit all day.
In old business, I had made some. In old business, I had made some suggestions about the previous budget discussions, and I wondered where those went. I sent those to you and to OP, I don't know.
Well, I didn't make any actual changes, like, I, I made note of that at this point, yeah.
Well, I have them right here, and I, I mean, I could read them, but, you know, I just, I just hope that we're going to actually, you know, talk about it.
Yes, you should read them, thank you, you're good.
So I propose removing downtown beauty line item from the highway budget altogether. Putting that thirty-five hundred dollars could be reallocated and split based on the actual cost of materials to the conservation commission and/or the tree warden for the mulch of the trees, because that's basically what happens in that downtown beauty line item if we take the porta potties out. Allocating any remainder of that amount to contracting, recycling, and trash pickup downtown, so that the, the road crew no longer has to do that once a week. And that's based on my knowledge of what I pay Perry's to pick up my trash at Whistle, and they pick it up every other day, and it's very affordable, just put it that way. Removing the bike, whatever that line is, bike path, all phases, under the public works and the town capital improvements three-year plan. Because that's obsolete now, it doesn't even.
And it never was a bike path.
It never was, yeah.
Does it, it's just, why is it still printed on the paper?
Because it was a one-time category that was there, and.
Right, but it doesn't make any sense.
Yeah.
It just doesn't make any sense to have it there, I mean, let's clean it up, right? The seven thousand three hundred and thirty-one dollar deficit could be canceled through accrued interest? Because that's listed with a deficit on the bike path, like, why? What does that tell anybody when they read it? We allocate the twenty twenty-five funds from recreation capital fund balance to pay one-time costs for the kiosk assembly at the trailheads, any remainder required could come from accrued interest possibly. And the last thing was to change recruitment, police, and general government to LVRT trailheads, and reallocate the six thousand six hundred and sixty-one dollars to cover the costs of HPV bikes on the trail that they use on the trail, maintenance costs for the kiosks, contracting, trash and recycling pickups at the trailheads. Those are my suggestions. I don't know what we want to do with them, put them in your, in your little pot to.
Type it up or something like.
I just, you know.
Yeah.
Let's look at it, so it makes sense, I mean, yeah, there's old stuff on there that, nobody understands what that is anyway, I mean.
I used to, I stopped, I stopped yelling about the bike path years ago, but there would never was a bike path.
It's all great.
Well, there was.
Thanks for doing your part.
There was originally.
Yeah.
Originally, the money was for a bike path, but there never was a bike path physically.
And I just, I'd love to see fewer of the town reports in the recycling bin at the post office, honestly. I mean, if there's some way that we can get people interested in actually looking at it, I think that would be super. So whatever we can do to potentially think about.
I'd never.
Engaging people more in reading it.
One with a number of sites, five hundred dollars.
That's exactly what I was going to say, Danny, put, put a star on one and have a prize.
Right.
A little sticker on it.
I don't know, I mean.
But you, you could only get the prize if you come to town meeting.
And it, you know, additionally.
No, it's got to be, it's got to be a written phrase in a sentence, so you know that they read it, like, you are the winner.
I like it.
You are a winner.
I mean, I, I don't know, I mean, the, there's a government class up there at Hazen, apparently, I mean, the kids were here during the voting day process, observing how we do our voting stuff. Are they, are they talking about our town meeting in the government class, I just wonder.
I can't imagine.
I have an old business.
Yes.
I need that grants policy signed that you guys approved last time, please.
The one that we just changed.
Yeah, just, I needed to change the threshold, and so, and sign that, please.
Any other new business, old business reports? So. Oh, just one thing on this deputy health officer, it says, please give a brief statement of why the select board believes the recommended individual will make a good health officer. Do you want me to write that?
Yes.
Yep.
Yeah, because he's already doing the job.
How many, just say that I know.
Hey, hand me that thing to sign there, Eric. Yeah, you know, your right hand.
This one, I'm signing, and that's you, is that what's happening?
He's doing it because we told him to do it.
All right, so I think that's everything, so, meeting adjourned, thank you.
No need to come in, Kaylee, I signed your name on all this stuff tonight.
Thanks, Daddy.